All right, great. Well, let me call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the City of Lincoln City, City Council Meeting of Monday, July 27, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Roll call, please, Mr. Twig. Yes?
Here.
I'm here, too.
I'm here.
Also here.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to forego the Pledge of Allegiance and get right to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of one item, and that's the minutes of our regular meeting of July 13, 2020. And for a motion to approve, I found one mistake that informed Mr. Twig about, but I want you recognizing it. On page nine of the packet, it's of the minutes there, page nine, and it's the motion to approve the final order of the Scranton Zone. And it was actually a four to three vote. So Mr. Parson is the one who's missing from the nays. And I checked with Mr. Parson to make sure, and he acknowledges he did vote with a nay. So if Mr. Twig would make that change and any motion include that correction would be great. Yep, Mr. Martin?
On that same page, third, well, I guess it's actually the fourth paragraph from the bottom, Mayor Anderson said he's happy. We're actually subsidizing projects, we're not subsiding them. That was in there twice in that paragraph. Or I saw it twice somewhere.
Yeah. All right. All right.
Yeah, twice in that paragraph.
Thank you, Mr. Twig, thanks, Rick. With that, any other corrections or notes? If not, approve the consent agenda with those changes?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda with those changes.
Second.
And we have a second from Judy Casper, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, thank you. All right, we have public comments. And I'd asked Mr. Chandler to summarize. I might, before we do that, remind the public that they have the ability to put public comments at publiccomments@lincolncity.org. And our process has been to make sure those become a piece of the record. But depending on the volume and the time, may not always be read publicly, but they will be made part of the record and shared with council. And at the same time, you know, the availability is certainly there to go into the council chambers where a computer is set up and people with assistance from our IT people could actually make public comments right there at the computer in the chamber office, chamber quarters. So both those avail themselves to the public. And Mr. Chandler, what would you get in the way of public comments?
Oh, you're muted. Since your last meeting, on public comments for agenda and non-agenda items, these are not ones related to public hearings, we've received six. One of those was published with the packet and is in the packet, and then we have received five since then. I've cat, I put the summary by topic, and we'll just go through those by topic so they're not in the order in which you received it. We received two comments pertaining to COVID-19. The first one is anonymous, and they are dissatisfied that the city removed the 24-hour hold rule. The second was from Georgia Roloff, who complained about the number of people using Regatta Park despite the fact the park is closed. We received one comment pertaining to the Fourth of July fireworks. That came from the Rhodes End Neighborhood Watch Group, and they made some recommendations, including stationing officers at the beach entrances and lighting up the beach with spotlights. We received one pertaining to pickleball from the Action Committee for the Lincoln City Pickleball Club, who would like to schedule limited pickleball play at the outdoor Dorchester Club and provided some suggestions on how to do that. We received one about police service from Laura Jockey, who complained about the misinformation and the argumentative treatment she received from one of our police sergeants. And then we received one that is an agenda item tonight, named consideration for the Villages at Cascade Head. This came from Michael Pickering, Susan Pickering, and Raylene Erickson, who are recommending Seascape as a lovely and fitting name. And as I mentioned, these have been given to the city council, and they've also been given to the clerk, who will incorporate those into the record, and they will become part of your next meeting's minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we can move to presentations, and we have the Lincoln City Cultural Center Annual Report. And Mr. Twig, if you could let Nikki in, that would be great. Yep, there she is. Can move to presentations. All right, Nikki. Good afternoon. Twig, if you could let Nikki in, that would be great.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, Nikki.
Check, check.
Yep, there she is. You're good.
Can you hear me, Mayor Anderson?
Yeah, yes. Can you hear us? Nope, it's not.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm experiencing some audio on my end, so I'm hearing you through a different speaker.
Okay. All right, we can hear you nice and plain.
No. If you'll give me just one second, I'll get in on a different computer. Sorry.
All right.
All right, well, maybe I should just go ahead.
Well, you're actually coming through very clear on our sound.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead then. Are the slides going to come up?
I think, Nikki, we have the slides for you to be driving the slides. And so I think maybe I should... Do you want me to do that, Nikki?
Hello.
Hi, Nikki. I think if you put me on mute, then you can hear the meeting while it's happening on the Zoom.
Great. But that's not the problem, unfortunately. I can't hear you at all in real time, but...
Are you hearing me now? Because if you're hearing me now, I have the Zoom audio on, and you should be able to hear the others.
All right, sounds good. So I'm ready to go. Hello, Mayor Anderson and city councilors. On behalf of the Lincoln City Cultural Center Board of Directors and our entire organization, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. We always love to report what's going on at the Lincoln City Cultural Center and in our nonprofit, and of course, in our ongoing partnership with the city. So this presentation is organized into three snapshots, and you can probably guess what they were. One of them was, what is the fiscal year 2019, which ends on December 31st. And then the second snapshot is what happened to us in the first quarter, and then when we ran into the wall called COVID-19. And then, of course, the third is going to be how our organization plans to adapt and head forward and past this wall and in going into the alter landscape as we go forward. So can you see the slides? Okay, I'll go ahead, and we can catch up with the slides. So 2019, we had 344 events at the Lincoln City Cultural Center, and those are one-time events that lasted anywhere from a day or an hour or a month. That doesn't include the ongoing classes that we host that are attended by thousands every year. So we had 128 performances in our auditorium. We had 30 visual arts events, and that includes month-long exhibits. We also had one-time classes and quite a few community events, and those are the ones that we... That's what we call the events that don't really fit into our mission or are done on behalf of the community. And we also had several events that were done just for our Capitol Campaign for the Plaza, which of course kept our board and staff busy throughout 2019. At those 344 events, we saw 43,741 patrons, and that's a slight uptick from fiscal year 2018. The numbers are, and like I said, those are numbers of discreet, countable people, not repeat patrons at classes that they come to every year, every week. And then these are also not Visitor Information Center classes. We also did several important building upgrades to the historic D-Lake School. I think while our primary mission is to provide arts and culture programs, we see it as a mission, our also mission to keep and preserve the D-Lake School. I think the most visible upgrade in 2019 were the beautiful windows on the west side. Of course, that was a project of the city, and I hope that you've had a chance to see them. They improved the look of the building, not just on the outside, but on the inside as well. And we're really happy with how they turned out. I hope you are as well. We did several program, I mean, building improvements during 2019, including improvements to the HVAC system in the auditorium and also some technical theater upgrades, among other things. So Allison, are we doing slides? Shall I try a different method? Well, they may proceed to packets, so hopefully, if you have questions about individual numbers, you can find them in the slides.
Yes, David, if you want to allow me to share screen, I could use the packet to go through that. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, Nikki. Just keep talking, and I'll catch up on the slides.
Great, great. Okay, so program revenue is about the same as 2018. We had tickets and fees of $189,791. That's our program revenue. Then we also had rental income of about $44,000. We had our information center contract of $32,000, membership donations of $20,000, and then a variety of fundraising events and other ways of creating income. And so that figure is about the same as it was in 2018. It's about $330,000. What's really changed, though, in 2019 were our donations. And if you'll look at the 2019 donations, you can see that our contributed revenue was, is quite a bit more than it was the year before. It looks about, I think, two to three times as much as it was in 2018. But about two-thirds of these funds are restricted for the Capitol Campaign. They all came in for the campaign for the Cultural Plaza. On this table, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And on this slide, you'll see the contributions in kind. That's where we account for the city's contribution of occupancy, for which we're very grateful. Thank you. And the next slide, please. Here's our expenses. All these figures are increased over fiscal 2018. The cost of the operations of delivery of arts and culture program is about the same, but we had an increase in expenses from the design, engineering, and fundraising plans of the Plaza project. Next, please. So that, but that all ended up being money well-spent because we were able to make our Cultural Plaza campaign goal, our individual contributions goal of $250,000, we were able to meet it within one year. We just celebrated that last month. And my thanks to the council and to the mayor for leadership in this project. It was a good day. Here's our balance sheet and as we stood at the end of fiscal 2019. It's a healthy position, but I want to say again, for the record, that $400,000 of that is being saved and is restricted for the Plaza project. Okay, so that's our snapshot of 2019. Next snapshot is what happened to us just after the first quarter in 2020. We had some very successful programs in the first quarter 2020, including We the People, which was a musical about the founding fathers, was seen by every child in Lincoln City from grades three through eight. So they learned a lot about how the Constitution works, just in time, I would have to say. And just as we were preparing to start the festival of illusions, we were hit with the closures from COVID. And like most other public facilities, we began with event cancellations. Can we move on to the next slide, Allison? Thank you. So we jumped in in March with our new cleaning and sanitation measures, moved on to canceling some programs, then, of course, on to the full closures. And we were closed to the public from March 17th to May 31st. We're now open to the public following all the state and county recommendations that we can find. The shutdown and current activity restrictions have brought serious program and financial consequences for our organization. We have a business model that depends upon personal connection and hands-on learning, and both of those are very difficult now. And the hardest blow to our day-to-day operations was the loss of the Lincoln City Visitor Information Center, which was not renewed by Explore Lincoln City. It had been, become the heart of the upstairs area. It's a place where people would come and leave messages and check in and get their visitor information and buy tickets. And with it not there, it's hard for our patrons to know where to begin, you know, when they get to the cultural center. It also supported our gift shop, which had to close, and that provided a small amount of artist income to about 50 of our artists and vendors. So we're all feeling the loss of that gift shop as well. And of course, we've had to suspend our yoga classes and nearly all of our classes and workshops and meetings. So, next slide, please. During the closure, we had four staff members who were laid off completely and others with reduced time. And we were able to reinstate everyone with PPP loan and open in June. So we were able to open in June 1st. Since then, we've laid off one full staff member permanently, and the rest of the payroll is about 60%. It was before COVID. Our volunteer program, which is the mainstay of our everyday operations, is down to about 10% of what it was pre-COVID, but we have much fewer events, so we've managed to staff them so far. Our mission response during COVID-19 had two parts. One was called Creative Quarantine Kids, and that was an assembly and distribution of project kits for kids. We ended up doing about 2,600 of those over the course of, I think it was nine weeks. It turned out to be a really wonderful community project with a lot of participation and donations and volunteer time. And we, thanks to Ed and Explore Lincoln City, we received a lot of press and airtime statewide. So it was a good program for all of us, kind of kept us going. And at the same time, we provided artists and musicians the opportunity to be seen through our CQ Studio program on Facebook. Any donations that we received in that time were passed on to the musicians and artists. And since we're reopening, we started a number of programs. We continue to host the Lincoln City Farmers and Crafters Market. We've also added a Tuesday night market that is open from 4 until 7 on Tuesday evenings. We're starting a concert program with a hybrid of in-person and live streaming. It's called Quarantunes. Also in August, we will be launching a packet workshop, which is actually the location that you can come to from Thursday through Sunday to pick up art packets for your kids by donation. We're also doing studio rentals in the upstairs area. We're going to have a pop-up gallery with Bob Romer and Colleen Hickey. We're moving the textiles workshop upstairs, and we're also renovating spaces for more studio space. And so now we come to the most difficult snapshot, which is looking into the future and trying to decide and strategize about which way we're going to head. And we're trying to understand how we can fulfill our mission to enrich the lives of people in Lincoln County through arts and culture without compromising anyone's safety. We've been fortunate enough to receive relief from the city's program. Thank you for that, and other sources. But while these sources are welcome, they're really not a long-term solution, and that's where we'd like to head, is toward a long-term solution. So we're going to be investing in any performing and visual arts event that can be done in a socially distant way. We're working on ways for students to access the building when we don't have official open hours, maybe on, by appointment or through other means. We're also concentrating on monthly rentals to artists and culturally compatible nonprofits so that there are situations that we can help each other. And we're also thinking about next school year, which is going to be an unusual year, and teachers and parents are going to need new ways to provide arts experiences for their kids, and we feel as if we're really poised to help them in that regard. So you may have heard that the Cultural Plaza project was dealt a blow a few weeks ago when we learned that our $1.5 million in lottery bond money had been canceled. At the same time, our outdoor activities have never been more in demand. So we're going to go forth with the project as best we can. We will not be able to begin work on the project in '21 as we had planned. But we will be reapplying for those same funds, and we think we have a good chance to be on the shortlist for those funds again. We'll be working on artistic elements. We'll be working on grant writing and continuing to fundraise for the next year. We're dedicated to this project and to the safe stewardship of all the donations that we've received so far. And we invite you and the rest of the community to keep the faith with us. So in closing, I'd like to express our gratitude for the city's support of our nonprofit and our mission. And I think it's important to say that without the work that we have done together in forging the new lease, in creating reserves, in working together on projects, our organization would not be in... We would not have been able to get through the last four months in the way that we did. So thank you for that, and thanks to the whole community for your support. So it's put us in a place where we might be able to survive this thing.
Great, thank you, Nikki. Well done. Can you hear us all right?
Nikki, can you hear us okay?
I can hear, yes, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're glad to do what we can for the city, the cultural center. You've been a good steward, and you've done what you said you would do. And, you know, we appreciate the thought behind you dealing and the whole organization dealing with this pandemic and how you have to be flexible, as we would say. So, you know, we're with you. I don't want you to, and you can tell your board the same thing. We'll be with you all the way, so we'll work out of this. It's... Any councilors have anything they want to add for Nikki and the board? I can't see anybody. If you could pull that down, Allison, thanks. Okay. Deanna?
Yes. Hi, Nikki. I just wanted to say that it was a shock to me that you didn't, that that money, that $1.5 million, didn't get to you, and that tonight's the first I heard of that. And that must be a pretty big blow, but hang in there. Like you said, you'll probably be first on the list on your next go-round, but that must have been a pretty hard punch to accept. Sorry for that. And thank you for your, thank you for your update. We know you're hurting, everybody is. It's just, we just have to keep working through it.
So really lucky, we have a great board and a great staff and wonderful patrons and donors. We budgeted for donations to go down immediately, you know, when we did our revised budget in March, and that has not happened. People have been renewing their memberships, and it's been really heartening.
That's good, good to hear. All right, anybody else on the way in? Thank you, Nikki. Thanks for taking the time and for doing this report to us. Okay, if we can then go to, we have a public hearing? Oh. There's Nikki.
Lost you again.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you. No more questions?
No.
There weren't any more questions, thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, thank you.
All right, if we could move on into the agenda then, and we have a public hearing, and this is the Rhodes End Village at Cascade Head Urban Renewal Tax Increment Financing. So consider the hearing open. Allison and your staff, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thanks, mayor and council. I really just want to introduce, and actually, David, I think we need to let Elaine Howard into the meeting.
No problem, I'll let her in right now.
Thank you. So we have here tonight Jody Mesher. She's our Economic Development Coordinator. I know many of you are familiar with her. She's been with us through the RARE AmeriCorps program for almost 10 months, 11 months now, and done some great work here to further the efforts of your Directive of Staff to explore new urban renewal areas as a possible funding mechanism for public improvement projects, and in particular, the Rhodes End Villages at Cascade Head Urban Renewal Area, which is before you this evening for the public hearing. And then we also have Elaine Howard with Elaine Howard Consulting, who has been assisting us throughout the last several months on this effort. And here we are. And I'll let Jody and Elaine go through the PowerPoint presentation that I'll be driving, so I'll be prepared to share screen again, which it looks like David's got me set up there. And so if you give me one moment, we'll get going on that. There we go. Okay. Can everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
All right. Jody, you're Elaine?
I think I'm starting out. Next, next slide Allison. So what we are going to go through tonight is an Urban Renewal 101. Why, number two, why is urban renewal on my tax bill? Background on the Roads and Villages at Cascadehead Plan and Report and the Taxing District Impacts. I know for city council, the first two items are repetitive for you and I apologize for that. But since it's a public hearing, we think it's important to go through that basic urban renewal information. So anybody who is watching will understand it. Next slide. So when an urban renewal area is formed, at the time that it's formed, all of the property tax revenue has been going to the regular taxing jurisdictions. Next slide. Looks like we don't have our animation in this tonight for some reason. But as the property tax revenue increases, there we go. And if an urban renewal area is formed, that property tax revenue, do one more click Allison, I think, that's shown in the blue, goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. The area in the green continues going to all of the different taxing jurisdictions. So property taxes in Oregon increase for two main reasons. One is just the 3% appreciation that happened due to Measures 5, 47 and 50. And two is either new construction or substantial improvements. So the amount of money that goes to the urban renewal area is from that increase in assessed value within the urban renewal itself, not from the city as a whole. And in a couple of slides, we'll talk about how the assessor actually spreads that out so that everybody in the city pays a portion of that. But the amount that the assessor determines goes to the Urban Renewal Agency, comes from the increase in assessed value within the urban renewal area. It does not, urban renewal does not increase property taxes. It only divides out those property taxes that a property tax owner already pays. Next slide. Urban renewal is an economic development tool. It's used all over Oregon. It is unique in that there are many plans that cities adopt, but they don't have a financing tool associated with them. Urban renewal works well because it does have that financing tool. By statute, it has to be used to address blighting influences in areas of the city. Whenever I work in a community, they get their feathers ruffled a little about calling their community blighted and I do not blame them. Unfortunately, that's what the statute talks about as a precondition of establishing urban renewal. And we'll talk about what that means in a few later slides. Urban renewal functions on the increases in property tax revenues in the urban renewal area or areas. And again, it's used all over Oregon. And there's a slide on the next page that shows urban renewal in Oregon. You can see up and down the coast. It's used in most of the major cities. Newport has three urban renewal areas. Yawhott, Florence, Reed'sport, North Bend, Banden has two. Garibaldi, Tillamook, Seaside, Warrenton, Astoria. So it's widely used economic development tool in your area of the state. Next slide. So blight again is a precondition to an urban renewal area. It generally covers underdevelopment or underutilization of property. And within the proposed Roads End and Villages at Cascade area, there is a lot of property that is underdeveloped, not developed. It also covers inadequacy of infrastructure, including streets and utilities. And again, within that area, there are a number of deficiencies within both the street system and within the major utilities serving the area. Next slide. So an urban renewal area functions often by an income source. And that income source is the yearly property tax collections that come into the Urban Renewal Agency. Every year, it has to develop a budget, so the expenses. So just like the city develops a budget, an urban renewal agency develops a budget that allocates money to the projects, programs and administration. Urban renewal in Oregon is capped by what's called maximum indebtedness. And maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that may be spent over the life of an urban renewal area on projects, programs and administration. So although when we look at an urban renewal area and look at financial feasibility, we project how long we think it will take to get to that maximum indebtedness. That projection is an estimate. The defining factor or time when urban renewal ends is that maximum indebtedness. Next slide. So this is just another visual that shows how that property tax money goes. So that dark blue on the bottom is the money from what's called the frozen base assessed value. So that's the money of property taxes off of the value of the area at the time if the city council adopts it. And then the green is the money that will go to the Urban Renewal Agency. And I think Jody will talk a little bit about, and I will a little later, also in the financial portion. In this urban renewal plan, city council directed that a portion of that increase in assessed value, the property taxes off of that, will go to all of the taxing jurisdictions. So that light blue area is that 15% of the property tax revenue off of the increased assessed value that will end up going to voluntarily, if the city adopts this, to all the different property taxing districts. At the point that an urban renewal area expires, the assessed value will have increased over the timeframe of the area. So that the money that goes back to all the different taxing districts hopefully will be larger than what would have happened if urban renewal didn't exist to provide that infrastructure that helps properties to develop. So this just shows visually what that concept of how urban renewal works. You can see in the beginning, the first year of the tax increment revenues is fairly low, $166,729. But the last year of TIF revenues, it gains, obviously over time, as you can see the graph goes upwards. The last year is projected to be a little over $8 million. Next slide. This just talks about the concept of a hypothetical property tax bill to help understand two concepts. One is how the assessor first decides how much money goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. And then why urban renewal is on every property tax bill in the city, even though the taxes don't go up. So you can see on this slide in the second row, and Allison, maybe you can, the second column can point to that, the property value of $100,000. And with the tax rates in the city of Lincoln City, off of that property, the taxes would be about $1,413. The next year, if that property was in an urban renewal area and it had a 3% increase, if you go to the final column, you can see that that 3% increase is $42.40. And, and I actually think Allison, if we go to a next slide, it kind of breaks these out separately. Yes, there we go. $100,000. Click again. $103,000 is the increase with 3,000, 3% interest. So the total tax bill is $1,455. And you can see that a property with urban renewal and without urban renewal would pay the same amount of taxes. It's just that a portion of those taxes gets allocated to the Urban Renewal Agency. So in concept, we use this slide to illustrate two things. The first thing is the assessor will do this calculation to every single property in the urban renewal area if it is adopted. The assessor will then take the total amount of that money and then divide it among all property tax bills within the city. Next slide. So this helps reinforce that understanding that all property tax bills within the city have a line item for urban renewal. So the assessor goes through three different phases. First is that calculation of the total assessed value within the urban renewal area, the distribution of that to all property tax bills, and then the collection. Next slide. So this is just a hypothetical city that has 40 houses. And each house has an assessed value of $100,000. And we just do that so it makes it easy to understand, of course. So the total assessed value of this is $4 million. Next slide. If this was an urban renewal area and they put 25% of their city in urban renewal, which is the limitation, that would be those 10 houses. So the urban renewal area value would be 10 times that $100,000. So it would be $1 million out of the 4 million total assessed value. Next slide. So that, after the first year, if those properties grew by the 3% growth rate, each assessed value would increase by $3,000. So a total increase of $30,000 by the 10 houses. So that's that first step that the assessor does is for every property within the urban renewal area, the assessor calculates what that growth is, multiplies it by the tax rate and comes out with the total amount of money that the assessor has to allocate to the urban renewal agency. Next slide. People would assume that that money comes from each of those houses in the urban renewal area. Next slide. But it doesn't. And that's why we try to put that in a big red cross over the top of it to say, no. That, that is a logical assumption. That seems to make sense to all of us, but is not unfortunately the way that it happens. The reason it doesn't happen that way is very complex and is tied to the passage of Measures 5, 47 and 50. Next slide. But what does happen is that amount of money is divided among every property within this little utopia equally according to its assessed value. So in this utopia, they were all $100,000. In a real city, of course, it gets divided differently because every property has a different assessed value. So the assessor calculates the total amount, but then divides it on the property tax bills to every property in the city. And again, that doesn't increase their property tax rates or the property tax bill. It just means that the overlapping taxing districts get less of that money than they would have if urban renewal didn't exist. Next slide. So again, each home has an increase of $44 in the assessed, in the taxes. Out of that, each one of them is going to pay $11 to the Urban Renewal Agency. And all the other taxing jurisdictions will end up getting $33 more to spread among them out of that increase that has to go to the Urban Renewal Agency. Next slide. So again, there are no new taxes, no new permanent rate property taxes for a new urban renewal area. Schools are indirectly impacted by urban renewal, and I believe we have another slide on that also, because they're funded by the state's school fund. The state's school fund is comprised of a number of different funding sources. Property tax revenues is one of those sources. If you decide to adopt a new urban renewal area, there will be a line item on the property tax bill. Right now, you have an urban renewal area. Everybody within the city will see that line item now on their property tax bill. There are no bonds or local option levies impacted by this proposed urban renewal plan. It used to be that bonds and local option levies were impacted. There was a change in the legislature recently that changed that. So there is no impact to a school bond or a county bond or any local option levies like a fire district bond or local option levy. Next slide. This goes over to Jody.
Thank you Elaine. Before we jump into the actual plan and report, we wanted to give a brief background about how this plan came before you. So in 2019, we all conducted a feasibility study of two different areas in Lincoln City to determine which area would be, or would work well with a tax increment finance area. So in April of 2019, city council approved the creation of a plan for your review. So that's what city staff and Elaine Howard Consulting has been working on since then. So the creation of the plan involved quite a bit of public input. So we did have an advisory committee formed. And that committee met four times and they were really influential on going through different aspects of the plan. And we do want to acknowledge members of that advisory committee. So that was Mayor Anderson, Urban Renewal Agency Chair Deanna Hinton, Ron Chandler, County Commissioner Katie Jacobson, Patty Crone, the Planning Commission Chair, Lincoln County Fire and Rescue District Chief Dolman, Dr. Karen Gray from the Lincoln County School District, Pam Barlow-Lind, the tribal planner from Confederated Tribe of Sletz Indians. And we also had two residents from the Roads End and Cascadehead neighborhoods, Janet Knight and Laura Barton. So thank you again to the advisory committee members. Really helpful for getting this plan up and running. On top of the advisory committee, we had two public forums that were open to all Lincoln City residents and interested stakeholders. We were able to get a lot of input about projects to be included in the plan. And there was also an online survey available at the same time for any, any folks that were unable to attend the public forums. We had a briefing with the overlapping taxing districts just to let them know how the plan was going and what the financial implications would be for the taxing districts. And we've also had, we'll be holding a public hearing tonight. We've had two briefings with city council to give an update on how the plan has gone. And then we sent formal consulting confer letters on May 6 of 2020 to all of the overlapping taxing districts with the final financial projections to that specific taxing district. We met with the Urban Renewal Agency on June 15th for the final review of the plan. And at that time, the agency approved for the formal adoption process of the plan. The Lincoln City Planning Commission met and included in the packet is a memo with their comments and recommendation. And lastly, we had a briefing with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to give a similar presentation to this one and review the plan with the county as well. So we can go to the next slide. So this is the proposed boundary for the plan. We wanted to put this up there for anyone's watching that wants to know what, what is this? What are we looking at? And I also wanted to ask if there's any questions at this point about the boundary before we move on.
I think so.
All right. So Elaine mentioned the maximum indebtedness. And again, that's the total amount of money that can be used in the area over the life of the plan. So for this plan, the maximum indebtedness is $87,100,000 over the 27-year estimated timeframe of the plan. So when we talk about the urban renewal area and the projects to be included, all of the, for the project to be implemented using urban renewal dollars, it must be included in the plan. So as you go through the project categories and the projects listed within the plan, some of them you'll notice are very specific while others are left more broad. And that's done intentionally so that way, as time goes on, we can conduct community visioning similar to the TAC Vision and the Nelsk visioning similar to the TAFT Vision and the Nelskot Vision and the other neighborhoods in Lincoln City did with the current urban renewal district. So through that community visioning process, the projects will be more defined, given more updated financials and more specifics. So are there any questions about any of the projects included in the plan?
Make your eye.
All right. So a few other sections of the plan we wanted to touch on. It does go through the process of making amendments to the plan. So one type of amendment would be a substantial amendment. So that's any increase to the maximum indebtedness of the plan or any increase of acreage to the plan. So to make a substantial amendment, the plan would need to go through the same formal adoption process, meeting with the Urban Renewal Agency, the Planning Commission, and the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners before going through to City Council. And then a minor amendment would be any amendment that's not substantial. And that would be a decision up to the Urban Renewal Agency. The plan also goes through the financing, which Elaine will talk about more after this. And it also talks about revenue sharing, which I will touch on the next slide as well. And then the last part is the relationship to the local objectives, and that is how the plan relates to the city's comprehensive plan. So the revenue sharing, this came about with the two previous briefings to City Council in February and then again in March. So City Council made the voluntary decision to do a fifteen percent under levy of the total annual tax increment finance. So this was done to decrease the impact to the overlapping taxing districts. So instead of the total amount of the tax increment finance going to Urban Renewal Agency, fifteen percent of that will be redistributed to the taxing districts. So at the same time as that decision, City Council decided to increase the duration of the plan to make up for that fifteen percent loss. So that came out to be a two-year increase. So the duration of the plan went from twenty-five to twenty-seven years. So next slide, thank you. And so that's the, yeah, go ahead, Elaine.
Sorry. So the TIF plan is what actually, if the City Council adopts the ordinance, gets adopted by the ordinance. The report is a technical appendix to the plan that meets statutory requirements. The things that are in the report are a list of the projects and what the existing conditions are of those projects, an estimated cost of each project, a financial analysis of the plan, an analysis of the tax increment revenues required to implement the plan, information about revenue sharing, very specific tables on the impact of tax increment financing, and then a required section that details the conditions of the areas. So we have to explain what the land use is and the zoning and the comprehensive plan designations, and all of that information is just mostly because the statute requires that you put together that technical information for City Council review. Next page. It's important to understand, and City Council and the mayor wanted to make sure that we presented this, that there is an existing urban renewal area in Lincoln City, and that urban renewal area is projected to terminate in fiscal year end 2022. So what this slide shows is what the impacts to the taxing districts were on fiscal year end 2020 and what they're projected to be on fiscal year end 2021. And then in 2022, again, another three percent increase, so what those projections would be. The importance of this is that the year after the area ends, all of that money will be redistributed back to all of these taxing districts. So while a new urban renewal area might come into effect, the old urban renewal area is terminating and giving back to the taxing district substantial revenue. Next slide. The next two slides show the projected annual impact of the proposed new area, and you can see for the city of Lincoln City, that's right in the middle of this chart. It starts out lower. It starts out at a little under fifty thousand dollars a year. But as time goes by, the estimate for our fiscal year end 2048 is about two-point-four million dollars. So those impacts increased, but also all assessed values throughout the city will also be increasing, and your other property tax revenues off of the areas outside the urban renewal area will be increased because of those increase in assessed values everywhere within the city. This just shows the general government taxing districts. These are the education taxing districts, and again, the Lincoln County School District and the Education Service District are not directly impacted by urban renewal anywhere throughout the state. And that's because they are funded through the state school fund, and the state school fund, again, is comprised of other funding sources in addition to property tax revenues. So while urban renewal impacts the amount of money that goes to the state school fund, we say that that state school fund is quote-unquote "backfilled" by other sources to meet a per pupil amount for each school district and education service district across the state. You can see that the very bottom right-hand number, Allison, you can maybe hit that, it's one-hundred-and-one million. That number is higher than estimated maximum indebtedness. It's not estimated, than the proposed maximum indebtedness. That is higher because maximum indebtedness does not include interest paid on borrowings. But the Urban Renewal Agency is authorized through the Oregon statute to collect those monies to pay that interest. So that is the difference between the total maximum indebtedness and the total amount of money that we project will need to be raised to pay for both the projects and programs and administration in the area and the interest on any borrowings within the area. Next slide. This slide just shows the offset of the closure of the existing area in fiscal year end 2022, what the projected impact for that first year would be for the new area, and what the positive difference would be for each taxing jurisdiction. So you can see Lincoln County School District is the top one there. So this would be money, again, that would go to the state school fund. An additional three hundred thousand plus would go to the state school fund. In the same year, that about fifty-nine thousand would go to the urban renewal agency. So the difference to them would be about two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. So the city of Lincoln City is four rows down, and you can see for them, they should be looking at an increase in about two-hundred-and-one thousand dollars with the shutting down of one district and if the new district is adopted. Next slide. As Jody said, all taxing districts were both invited to a meeting at City Hall. A couple of the taxing districts were actually on the committee, and then they were sent formal consultant confer letters and given a timeframe as required by statute to respond. The fire district both sent an email talking about their financial concerns, and then they sent a formal letter after that. And then the school district sent an email of general support. And I want to go over the main points in the fire district letter. And I don't know, Allison had told me that you were going to read some of the other responses, so I don't know whether this letter needs to be read in its entirety or just to go over the main points.
Just the main points would be.
Okay.
And how you've answered them, if that's what you're.
Correct. So they commented that to mitigate the impact of the under levy, to mitigate the impact of the urban renewal area, the under levy is a positive step, and they applaud that part of the plan. But the impact will be not only financial, but the development will bring an increased workload to their district. They say that our overall response is that they are not in favor of the proposal. They have two ideas about changing it. The first would be that there would be a shorter timeframe for the financial impact, returning value back to all taxing districts earlier. And second, that there be a reduction in publicly owned property within the urban renewal area. On those two issues, those were the initial issues and issues that they had raised throughout, and those were the issues that staff and my team raised to the City Council in the February and March meetings, and the City Council's response to those issues was that fifteen percent under levy. So I believe they felt like at that time that that was a way to help mitigate those concerns. The fire district also stated that they believe the urban renewal area be tied to a performance plan, and if the values didn't increase as projected, that it should sunset earlier than projected. They also stated that they encouraged the city to perform a detailed financial analysis considering the current and new economic issues that are impacting everyone. In response to the issue about the detailed financial analysis, what we have said is that this urban renewal plan does not go into effect in terms of taking that tax increment division of taxes until fiscal year end 2022. We all will know more about what COVID-19 impacts will be and other impacts will be during that time. So the City Council has the ability to under levy further if they see that that is something that needs to be done and to react to anything that we know more of at the time that this plan would actually start taking division of tax revenues. So that's the fire district response. We did have to include a response in your ordinance, so there is a portion of your ordinance that does say that those comments were considered. And unfortunately, the statute says you have to accept, reject, or modify. And so those sound like, you know, the reject sounds like a harsh language, but given the fact that you did do some other, you did the fifteen percent under levy, and you do have potential in the future, the request to change, at least at this point, has been rejected unless City Council makes a different determination tonight. And then the school district superintendent, Dr. Gray, did send an email of general support, and she had been very positive about her ability to interact and be part of the advisory committee. Next slide. So that's the end of the formal presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions now or wait. I know there's some public comment that needs to be read, and if there are any other questions, all three of us, Allison, Jody, and I, will be here if you have any questions that you'd like us to answer.
Great. Allison, can you take that, the slides down?
Sure.
That way I can see everybody. And welcome, Mr. Ogland. Nice to see you. All right. Are there any questions of staff for clarification of their presentation? And you're right, earlier said that, we've heard it a few times, but I think it's well worth doing it as you've done for the public to one more time. And based on some of the public comments we've gotten regarding this, it just proves that we do need to keep reporting and correcting the myths around the urban renewal and the misconceptions. So I'm, Mr. Twig, is there anybody in the chamber, public, to testify?
No, Mayor, nobody's here.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we hear the public comments that came in to Ron before we go further? Ron?
Okay. So we have received, as part of the packet, there were eight, well, nine, including the North Lincoln Fire Letter, which I won't read that since that's already gone over.
Yeah.
One was added on the twenty-fifth, but I'll go over that one. So anyway, so I'll first start by reading the ones that are in the packet. This first one is from Jim Davis, President Central Coast Builders Incorporated. I fully support the urban renewal program and would like to see it continue so as to enhance more of Lincoln City. The next one is from Roger Sprague. As one of the originators of the current urban renewal program, I am pleased with the results we now enjoy. Now that it is reaching its climax, I heartily support our city's opportunity to enter into a new urban renewal program. There are many more projects that can make our city safer and more beautiful. Please let me know when this council will take action to approve the renewal. Also, when the discussion begins on what projects should be included, I would like to be part of the public input. Thank you. The next one is from Dave Price. Hello, I'm proud to say I served as part of the TAFT visioning team many years ago when urban renewal first started its TAFT redevelopment project. At the time, I was in my early thirties, and the prospect of a twenty-plus-year timeline for a public infrastructure project seemed too unwieldy and distant to be possible. As I've grown a lot older, I can more fully appreciate the power of incremental financing grown over time and invested to build the community sought by today's residents to accommodate tomorrow's needs. The most remarkable thing about urban renewal, the urban renewal effort in Lincoln City, has been its consistency. The leadership from Kurt Olson to his successor, Allison Nelson Robertson, has been stable in a way seldom seen in civic leadership. Even better than its consistency has been its excellence. Smart, capable, innovative, unafraid of risk, these qualities of Allison's and before her Kurt will serve Lincoln City for decades to come. After each sunset comes a little sunrise. I hope Lincoln City will waste no time in establishing a bold new urban renewal district, one that will generate even bolder visions and ideas. The past few months have reminded us of the importance of place, of the importance of home. Let's make the most of it. Thanks for your consideration. The next comes from Keith Altamar. I hope your weekend went well. As a business owner in the Ocean Lake area of our town, I'm looking forward for the Part Two of urban renewal. I have watched the various parts of urban renewal, Part One, and can say that it invigorated the town. As you can expect, I was especially impressed with all the great work down in the area where I live and work, Ocean Lake. Finally, I wanted to say the transition between urban renewal directors a few years back was seamless when Allison Robertson took the helm. Her energy to implement plans and make sure we all get the most out of them is second to none. I regularly hear from her with urban renewal ideas. Simply put, we are a better theater for our patrons with her help. If I can't answer any questions or help in any way, please give me a call. Best. From Susan Gomburg. While we don't officially live in Lincoln City, my warehouse is there, and of course, it's our community base. The urban renewal projects the last several years have really made a difference in the beauty and livability of the city, but we can always do more. Allison Robertson has served us well for many years, along with the continuity when staff changes throughout the years. I look forward to the next phase, difficult as they may be with COVID-19, adding to the complications of getting things done. Have a great day. The next is from Gary Wood. Can the tax information provided in the plan documents be stated in the plan and, if possible, at the meeting on July twenty-seventh, in terms what it means to the average valued home property taxes? Please make clear the duration of change and the cost estimate in yearly property taxes for an average home in the affected areas. Please forgive me if this information is available in the plan and I missed it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next is from Rebecca McGee. We would like to comment on the urban renewal project for the Cascade Head area. Regarding the question of best land use, the definition of blight for the purpose of this urban renewal project is stretched quite broadly to encompass best use of land. And we don't think the area to be developed meets the criteria of either blight or true underdevelopment. There are plenty of areas in the existing margins of Lincoln City where there is clear evidence of blight and lack of development that affects residents. Gravel roads within residential areas, segments of unconnected sidewalks or no sidewalks, inconsistent street lighting or drainage, et cetera. We feel concentrating such a huge dollar figure without any real accountability to the residents that are in the median area of this urban renewal project is a real disservice. The question of whether a park, regional, or neighborhood size actually gets constructed is not guaranteed. Housing developments may or may not be reasonable for the current ingress and egress in traffic patterns. It may result in more second homes for wealthy part timers, not homes for working class, working Lincoln City residents. We already have serious concerns about the change to our neighborhood when the new school is constructed, as well as how traffic will be impacted by all the new school buses present at the intersection of Devil's Lake Road and Highway 101 due to the relocation of the school bus maintenance yard. Access to the area via northeast Port Avenue is not designed for any volume of cars and the visibility at the turn, at the top turn from Logan Road is very poor. Anyone making a left turn from Rhodes End area into northeast Port has an extremely short line of sight due to the curve in the road. A convex mirror might help this particular intersection. For the opposite traffic, cars from northeast Port Avenue turning into, turning left onto Logan, heading towards Safeway, are also subjected to poor visibility. The safety of people who live in, near, or will travel this through this Cascade Village area must be of utmost importance. We cannot afford short sideness that will cause permanent difficulties to our already burdened traffic patterns and create log jams or put pedestrians at greater risk. The urban plan remains vague and is, and in, the urban renewal plan remains vague in its prioritizing of the various projects it is being promoted to achieve. And the price tag is considerable and front loaded for administrative costs and could easily fail to fully fund any coherent improvement. The next is from Fran Lohnen. Good morning. I just received a document in the mail about the meeting on Monday for the urban renewal plan. This is the worst possible time to think of urban renewal when the community has been out of work for so long. The city council has already raised our garbage rates due to the, to a green recycling bin that we have to pay for even if we don't need it. And now you want to raise our property taxes to make the city look nice. People can't put food on the table and you want to raise the taxes. Thanks goodness, this is a referendum issue. I guarantee people will not vote for this ridiculous issue. And then maybe you will understand you have to stop raising prices for city services and stop raising our taxes. Start looking at ways to save money like the rest of the community has had to do in our daily lives. The next ones we have received came since the publication of the agenda. The first one is two parts from Michelle Reeves. Part One, although the improvement of our city through projects such as this is certainly beneficial, I believe the residents of Lincoln City need time for the events of this year to calm down before introducing an $86 million project by way of new taxes. Please consider allowing our local economy more time to recover. Thank you. Part Two. To the city councillors, my previous note included a mention of new taxes, which I mistakenly wrote. I do understand that this project uses current property taxes allocated for urban renewal. However, the timing of a project that upgrades parts of a city while existing businesses struggle to survive in the middle of an emergency seems an inconsiderate use of tax money. Is there a way to consider making this property tax money available for loans to businesses who without, who otherwise cannot receive help to keep their doors open? Thank you. The next one is from Kevin Coffel. I see little benefit, I see little if any benefit from the numbered and lettered proposals. The recent changes to the Nelscott District are virtually invisible. Maybe that was the point. What exactly are we going to get with that that will make a difference? Who is going to decide what fits with the visual consistency in a beach community? We live next to what is probably the ugliest subdivision in the city, a collection of multi-story VRD dwellings with little to no landscaping, save for stacks of boulders that belong in Bend, Oregon, not here in Lincoln City. The only true thing that Walker John said during Phase Three council meeting was that Olivia Beach was going to build more houses. Are we going to see a cap put on BRD dwellings? Are we going to get a dedicated authority figure to deal with BRD dwellings? I doubt Chief Palmer approved any of these houses, but it's his officers that are supposed to deal with the 21 people who show up in a house meant for 16 people who read the ads saying sleeps 23 and show up with different, with differing out of state plates during our supposed pandemic. From what I remember reading when the virus crisis started was that the city gets a lot of money in transit room tax. With that to use, what does the city actually do to earn that money? Most of these plan, most of these plan proposals, proposals sound geared towards Cascade Head and Rhodes End. Great, do it in someone else's backyard. There's not a left to do, not a lot left to do in the Nelscott area. I'm for parking for tourists and safer walking areas. Put in a safe walking area from Canyon Park north. That's a hillside and gully no one will ever be able to build a house on. Put in a supported walkway like the one by the hospital. Put to a citywide boat, this would fail. The plan proposal is ambiguous and needs some better explanation. From Michael Holden. I am writing in support of the urban renewal TIF plan. By way of introduction, I was Lincoln City Police Chief from 1976 to 1998 when I retired. But then I was elected as mayor and I served one term from 1999 to 2003. I mention this since I am a longtime resident and a former city employee. During the time I have lived in Lincoln City, urban renewal has played a vital role in changing the face of Lincoln City in many areas. It had a blighted negligent, neglected appearance. Through urban renewal, and there have been more than one, the city has made significant improvements. Urban renewal has proven to be a cost effective means to make the changes that we have needed. And I would encourage the city council to retain this program. From Joyce Sherman. Visitors do not come to this area to be in an urban area. They are attracted to the small town charms of this very small town. They do not come here to walk on sidewalks with streetlights, making it impossible to see the lovely night sky decorated with thousands of stars. When the signs first went up to announce the head to bay trail, I searched in vain for the trail. Wide sidewalks do not constitute a trail. At best, it could be called a walkway. Some of the various plans for the village's property have suggested that sidewalks could constitute a trail through the area. Not so. I remember seeing people walk along West Devil's Lake Road before it was improved with sidewalks. Now you rarely see anyone walking along West Devil's Lake Road unless it's people moving from one part of the hospital complex to another. People only walk on the sidewalks to get from point A to B, not for enjoyment. Once the city has improved northeast Salacy, people won't walk here anymore because the charm of walking in a rural area will be gone. When the street we lived on in southwest Portland was scheduled to be improved through the addition of sidewalk, we sold that house and moved permanently to this one. Nature, the ocean, beach, and woodlands are why people come to Lincoln City. The more the city is urbanized, the less attractive it will be for visitors. Every evening, we see people walking and cars moving slowly on Salacy in the hopes of seeing some of our local deer. When the elk herd moves off the golf course onto our yard to graze, people quickly appear to watch them. I must say it's rather amazing to hear that Rhodes End is a blighted area that needs urban renewal. The areas that are ordinarily covered in areas where modest homes have fallen into disrepair, not areas of homes often approaching or surpassing a million dollars. If blight means a gravel road and lots of trees, please bring it on. As it is, the improvements the city made has made to northeast Salacy has encouraged about a third of the drivers who use it to speed, which was impossible before the surface was upgraded at great expense to the city. Sadly, some of the speeders are often city pickups racing up to improving something. The final letter comes from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Dear council members, this letter is submitted jointly by Housing Land Advocates and the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Both HLA and FHCO are nonprofit organizations that advocate for land use policies and practices that ensure an adequate and appropriate supply of affordable housing for all Americans. FHCO's interest, interests relate to a jurisdiction obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. Please include these comments in the record for the above referenced proposed amendment. As you know, all amendments to the city's comprehensive and zoning map must comply with the statewide planning goals. When a decision is made affecting the residential land supply, the city must refer to its housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory in order to show that an adequate number of needed housing units, both housing types and affordability level, will be supported by residential land supply after enacting the proposed change. Staff report for U R P 202001. Mayor, I think this, I'm going to go ahead and finish reading this, but I do believe this is, came into me for this hearing, but it's not related to this topic. But I'll go ahead and finish reading it anyways.
Oh, okay.
The staff report for U R P 202001 recommends its approval. However, the report does not find, include findings for statewide goal 10 describing the effects of the urban renewal plan on the housing supply within the city. Maybe it does, I'm sorry. For example, Figure Three shows only a very small portion of the area's own multifamily and housing advocates have to wonder whether this TIF plan is aimed at preserving single family zoning patterns to the exclusion of the more diverse housing types. Although another small portion of the five acres is zone G C and R C where multifamily uses are conditionally allowed, it is unclear whether those lands are considered buildable lands in the H N A and B L I. And in any event, there is no guarantee that a property owner would seek to build multifamily housing on these properties. Further, it is stated that one of the proposed plan's mission is to eliminate depreciating property values. How would raising property values align with any city's affordability housing goals? The plan further states that it has the goal of helping the city accomplish its housing goals, yet makes no reference to what those goals are or how to propose to do this. Goal 10 findings would clarify these questions for advocates and planners alike. The required goal 10 findings must demonstrate that the proposed zone and overlay changes do not leave the city with less than adequate residential type supplies in the types, locations, and affordability ranges affected. See Mulford v. Town of Lakeview, 1999 rezoning residential land uses, Gresham v. Fairview, and also Home Builders Association of Lane County v. City of Eugene, subjecting goal 10 inventories to three and waterway protection zones of indefinite quantities and locations. Further, the report should reference the city's H N A to quantify the potential changes to the housing supply within the city. Only with a complete analysis showing any gains, loss, and needed housing as compared to B L I can housing advocates and planners understand why, whether the city is achieving its goals through U R P 202001. HLA and FHCO urge the city council to defer adoption of U R P 202001 until goal 10 findings can be made and proposals evaluated under H N A and B L I. Thank you for your consideration. Please provide notice of your decision to, and then they give some names and email addresses. Thank you for your consideration.
That's it. All right. Thank you very much. As always, thank you for the public for their comments and weighing in on this hearing. And I assume, Mr. Twig, nobody else has come in?
No, ma'am, no one else is here.
All right, thank you. So Elaine, I wonder if you or Mr. Upchello, especially that last comment from the Fair Housing Council, I guess I'm, I'm confused by it because we're not changing any zones.
Right.
And I don't see how that applies. Is there thoughts, comments?
It's my understanding that Urban Renewal Council has stated that it's not required. If you would like, I can draft findings addressing the statewide planning goals. You would not be able to do second reading of the ordinance this evening. And I'd have to get them in the packet if you wanted to do that. Now, I agree, the cases they were citing are referencing zoning actions. But that doesn't mean that they might not file an appeal. I think that it's pretty clear that by doing the urban renewal plan, you're going to be providing needed infrastructure, but providing needed infrastructure facilitates housing at a lower cost because infrastructure being available means the developer doesn't have to build it. It's all pretty logical. We could spell it out. We could add it. It's not something we could do tonight. If you wanted, we could do that. Or you could just take the position that they're wrong and that they're talking about zoning matters and we're not talking about zoning. But my recommendation is I would do second reading next time and add some findings.
Okay. Elaine?
Yeah, thank you. I, we had this come up in another locality recently, and it's come up because some of the planning directors have sent notice to D L C D on an urban renewal plan. And these groups get a copy of that notice. So I think in reality, they're misunderstanding what you're doing because you aren't changing any zoning and those are the things that require the goal 10. But as your legal counsel said, and I'm not a legal counsel, so I can't give you legal advice. I'm just a practitioner. I don't think you have to do this, but you may decide you want to because they might appeal. In the other locality, the legal counsel for the city did call the little counsel for the group that sent the letter and talked to them about it. And they said, oh, now we understand. So perhaps that could happen or not, but I do agree that I'm not sure they're understanding the action that you're taking.
Mr. Upchello, could you just share with us, say we went ahead tonight and did the first thing? and second reading, what's involved with an appeal? So what if they appeal? You know, we're not rushing into this anyway, it doesn't go into effect until, what, '22?
Yeah, it's just that you've done all this work, and to get it stalled by an appeal. And we have had conversations with this group. And they've been very one-sided in the sense they don't actually hear what we're saying. And I know that that's true for staff as well as me, so could go ahead and do first and second. If there's an appeal, we can always pull it back for reconsideration and adopt additional findings.
So the appeal goes to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So what happens then is you then have, you know, they'll write findings, and then your legal counsel has to respond to that, and then there's a hearing, so it does take up considerable time and staff time and attorney time?
The, what we could do if we did first reading tonight and second reading next time is we could jump ahead of that process. As you know, if we did first and second reading, they asked for notice of the decision, we'd send out the notice of decision. They're going to say, well, this is actually a land use action or has a significant impact on land use. And they're going to file a notice of intent to appeal, which just is one piece of paper. Then that triggers a requirement for us to, within 21 days, produce the record. During that 21-day period, we can withdraw the decision and reconsideration. But that's getting down the road, instead of two weeks, that's getting us down the road two months. I'd rather head it off before that delay happens, but it's your call.
Okay. All right. Well, let's keep that on the table. Deanna, as the existing Urban Renewal Agency Chair, you have some thoughts as we continue with this public hearing about the whole new hearing?
Have, is the hearing still open?
Yeah. We haven't deliberated or anything yet.
All right.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I have to add to the staff report is just a reminder to everybody that the new urban renewal district as proposed does not raise taxes. I've heard that, and I've seen it on social media, and it's inaccurate. It does not raise taxes. And your taxes will go up naturally. Everybody's does every year, about that 3% that we were talking about. And all that does is get redistributed, but your taxes do not go up. And I just think, I don't know how often we can say that, but I think that's one of the main misconceptions throughout this process. And the, well, we aren't deliberating, but I, if you want to comment about what Richard has.
No, that was helpful there. Let's close the hearing, take a motion to, unless somebody else wants to make a statement, you know, we'll get into deliberation. But how about a motion to close the hearing and the record?
So moved.
From Mr. Mark, thank you, sorry. And a second from Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with an aye? All right. Okay, so let's get into deliberation then. And Deanna, do you want to continue? Comments, thoughts?
Yes, I would, I would just say that the last comments that were read, that we received from the Fair Housing Council, my instinct is to have first and second reading and but also I understand the timing and how and how far we've come, and if it's just one meeting difference, then I can see doing first and then second, allowing our city attorney to write, to write the findings. I am really frustrated, I don't like us being here in this position, and so I would, and I'm not sure what we do about this. If after this is over, we write a letter to or talk with the L C D C and let them know that this isn't, you know, they need to do a better job maybe of educating about urban renewal, it seems to be a difficult thing for people to grasp.
How about other comments over this whole thing? Because the, correct me, Allison, the action we want to take is to approve the plan? Is the TIF plan, or what would be the official?
Yes, I've got the language here.
I believe the ordinance approves.
Yeah.
The plan and the.
And the report.
Yeah, it's all there.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah. So next on the agenda is the ordinance that would actually put this in motion. So in essence, what we'd be doing now is kind of debating, you know, that ordinance. So, Mr. Mark?
Yeah, and I, I don't really have anything that people haven't already said. I really appreciate the letters from past community leaders, Spriggs and the Holden's and the people who've gone through this before, that was very meaningful to me. Because what they said is, this works, and the city has benefited from it. And I did review the emails we received from people who raised concerns, sorry, excuse me. And as, sorry, as Deanna said, and as Elaine Howard spelled out, and Jody and Allison have explained several times, this is not a tax increase, I'll say it again. I was interested in the definition of blight, which I wonder if maybe we could have just found a, whoever it is that writes this stuff could have found a better word. I didn't think of the villages areas or the Rhodes End areas being blighted in, is the way that we, in the way that we commonly think of that word, but if it means underdeveloped and needs help, then that fits. On the housing question, I appreciate the, Mr. Appicello's guidance there. I think holding off on the second reading so that we can fix that findings problem, I think would make sense. As far as someone raised a concern, understandable and valid concern about moving ahead with this at the time of the virus crisis, and is there other ways to spend that money? And I just remind people that the revenue that is brought in as we, as we do this is really, I don't want to use the wrong word here, but it's not a whole lot of money to begin with. So those first few years, the fund has to grow, and I don't know, I do know that that money would not have a significant impact on addressing the concerns raised by the virus crisis by the time, by the time a significant sum is start to, just start to build up in that urban renewal account. God willing, we'll have a vaccine, and, you know, we'll be over the hump on that. Another objector raised concerns about traffic flow and things like that in Rhodes End as development increases, while the whole point of this creating this urban renewal fund is specifically to address those issues. So that's, that's why we're creating this district. So I think those were, again, nothing that no one hasn't already said, but I think if people have those concerns, I, in a nutshell, I, as I said, the support from the community leaders meant a lot to me, and I felt that all the objections that were raised, I thought were also addressed by the plan. So that's, go ahead.
All right, anybody else? Because actually, this is also rolling into the ordinance that we'll do next, so it's, but if anybody wants to make a comment? Yes, Judy?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with Counselor Mark. I think it's been explained very well. And I like the idea of proceeding with the first reading and then doing the second reading next time. Because as mentioned, it's going to take so long to get this moving forward that we'll all be, you know, looking down and picking daisies by the time it comes to actually working for somebody. So I'm for moving forward with it.
And, you know, if I can add my voice to that, too, I'm hugely in favor of this project. I am impressed, and it was fun to listen to it again, about all the public outreach that has gone on with development of this district. And the number of people, number of public forums, the press around it. I shouldn't be disappointed or surprised with still the kind of questions that come in that show people either haven't been paying attention or don't understand. And I will caution us all that those questions will live with this district for 27 years. So be prepared to answer them as you, as you know now. So I appreciate that. The other things that I talk about with this urban renewal district is that these monies alone, you know, won't, even though it's a big number, and it is, but not compared to the list of projects. And so, you know, we need to understand that this is just one funding source of many that will make, you know, the projects really happen. So, you know, we've got to leverage these dollars out, you know, over time, over the 27 years, and find partners that are interested in improving our community, and they're out there. So I think, you know, I'm not hearing anything negative from this council. I would hope the public would reach out to each one of us individually so we could, you know, explain in more detail if they so need it, where their thinking is wrong. And it does bother me, like, Deanna has indicated that it's not new taxes, you know, it's just the same taxes that you're going to get anyway, spread differently, and it allows us, the city, to do things. So with that, why don't we entertain ordinance number 2020-20?
Of course, it's disappeared.
Oh.
Too many buttons to push here. Your Honor, Council, this is first reading ordinance 2020-20, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the Rhodes End Villages and Cascadehead Urban Renewal Tax Increment Finance Plan and directing that notice of approval be published. Ask for approval of first reading.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
From Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
From Diane, okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Hinton?
Absolutely, yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. And how, what say you regarding the second reading? Do you want to forestall to the, is it August 10th council meeting?
August 10th.
August 10th to give Mr. Appicello time to, you know, come?
Does that need to be a motion?
Yeah. Should it be? Mr. Appicello?
Yeah, you can either do a motion or unanimous consent to move it to August 10th for second reading, or we could do second reading now, it's up to you.
I'd like to make a motion to move second reading to the August 10th meeting. I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hoagland and a second by Mr. Mark? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with an aye? All right, hearing none, thank you. All right, so we'll take that up, and you've got some homework to do, Allison and Mr. Appicello.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you all, it's been very nice working with you.
Likewise, thank you. All right, we have ordinance number 2020-10.
Your Honor, Council, I have some reading to do, and some of you had sent me comments, I think I've addressed them, but I'm gonna, first, I'm gonna do the things I know. I sent you a series of emails to address these issues, and so hopefully I'll catch them all. So the first, before I do the reading of the title, I'm going to read the changes. Under section eight on the, of the ordinance, which describes chapter 1750, the Ocean Lake Plan District, you had seen I had added a table of contents. When I did that, I realized that there was language missing from 1750. So I added 1750-060 landscaping, 1750-070 signs, 1750-080 supplemental regulations and exceptions, 1750-090 off-street parking and loading, 1750-100 restrictions. Well, actually, we could just deal with this by redoing first reading, and that way I don't have to read all the changes. Unless you, I can just describe what the changes are if you haven't gotten my emails. So I guess I'll ask you, before I do all this reading, is this, is this something you want to do?
Well, because of all, because of all the changes, we probably should go back to first reading. So, and the question is, how best to accomplish that?
Yeah, I, I mean, in the ordinance that you have, you know, I probably just should read the changes so we're highlighting what the problems are, there really aren't that many. Okay. So continuing, chapter 1750 added off-street parking and loading, 1750-090, 1750-100 restrictions, 1750-090 off-street parking and loading. No, that's wrong, because it's in there twice. Seventeen. 1750-110 restrictions, 1750-120 conflicts. And that, one of those was supposed to stay reserved, and it did earlier today.
Would it, would it be easier if we table this and bring it back on the 10th?
Yeah. I did get an email from Counselor hidden with some questions at about 5:30. Communicate with both Richard Townsend and Anne Marie about the changes that, but as you can see, there's always something. Didn't get past the first paragraph without finding another mistake.
So why don't we, because there, we are not under any kind of time. So why don't we, because there, we are not under any kind of time issue, correct? There's no pending pandemic on this.
The only issue was Allison had wanted to get it done this month. I think that had to do with, concurrently with the urban renewal district. So since we're delaying that two weeks, I think we can safely delay this two weeks.
Allison, did you have something burning on this that you needed to?
No, I think it's more about cities' property development. And so we'd be fine to wait if that's your preference, yes. Thanks for asking.
All right, thank you. So if it's all right with council, could we have a unanimous consent to move this to the August 10th meeting to give Mr. Appicello time to review it and clean it up and get us a clear copy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's me.
Is there anybody that doesn't want to do that? All right, I take that to be unanimous consent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then let's move to ordinance number 2020-13.
So this is parking and loading, and this was continued for second reading. I had only three changes, and it's really just cross-reference. On page three, section 16, the reference 1730-070 should be 090. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, on page, section 21, the reference 1745-070 should be 090. And on section 22, the reference 1750-070 should be 090. So just in three instances, the cross-reference was wrong. Counselor Hinden had asked a question about some bold text. She was correct that there's one section where the text isn't bolded in the table. That's just a mistake, it's for minimum landscaping, and there's three columns, and for some reason it's not bold. I think that's on page 32 and 33 of the ordinance. And Counselor Hinden asked why the VRD parking was not in the table. And I think it's probably because that's got its own separate requirements. But I don't think there's any harm with adding a column that says VRD parking is based on the number of bedrooms. See the section, well, the VRD section. So I see that more as an editor's note or a cross-reference and not really a substantive change. So with that, I'd ask that, I gotta read the title. This is second reading of ordinance 2020-13, an ordinance amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning and amending numerous chapters to consolidate and organize landscaping and off-street parking and loading requirements. Ask for approval of second reading with the changes as noted.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Hoagland.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Mark is second in the motion, thank you. And that would include, I'm assuming, the addition of the VRD parking reference?
Yeah, I would cross-reference it.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Kuz.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Casper.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Your Honor, Council, the next ordinance is 2020-14, signs. And we'd ask that this be continued to August 10th.
And go for unanimous consent to move that to August 10th? Is there anyone that would disagree? Dana?
I just have a question, why?
Frankly, I spoke to the interim planning director, and he'd asked, given the number of ordinances we have for additional time to go over them. It never hurts to have another set of eyes look at them.
Okay. All right. Is, are you all right with that, then? Ms. Hinden?
Sure, I guess so. We've just been waiting so long for this, I'm just, you know, I'm just frustrated, that's.
Okay. So we have unanimous consent to move this to August 10th? All right? And then, I'm assuming similar to the 2020-15?
Yes, and for the same reason, I spoke to the planning director, and basically, we just needed additional time to give it one last look.
Okay.
In this case, first look.
All right, and again, unanimous consent, is there anybody that disagrees? Ms. Hinden?
I just want to say again, I just, same thing. And I'm just hoping that all, all and any changes are going to be obvious to us when we're reading these.
Okay.
When we get them back.
So I hear no disagreement with moving it to August 10th. Thank you. All right, so we're into second reading of ordinance number 2020-17.
Your Honor, Council, this is second reading of ordinance 2020-17, ordinance 2020-17, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, mending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, chapter 1708 definitions, amending and updating city definitions based on changes proposed in three other ordinances, 2020-10, 2020-13, and 2020-14. In this ordinance, I had a couple of comments, Counselor Hinden had sent an email. There were, there was one question I thought that was pertinent, that I agreed with, that common open space is a proposed definition. And that Counselor Hinden suggested that is confusing because of our open space zoning and make you think that it's a passive recreation area as opposed to just common area. So with regard to that, I think it would be a good idea to change that definition to common area. But if you want to proceed, and that's the one thing that I thought that was really important to fix. But if you have some other, there was an earlier email from, or Casper, and if I can find my responses there. I sent an email response.
Regarding the daycare, day center, day?
Yes. So Counselor Mark had pointed out that the reference I used was probably incorrect. I was looking at a different children's service.
I thought your solution by just saying state of Oregon, I thought covered it.
Okay, thank you. Of course, my computer is frozen right at the moment.
Right.
Yeah, Dana?
While he's looking for that, I had a couple other suggestions, too, under definitions, which is the corbels, and as it reads, it says, corbel means a projection on a building out from a masonry wall. When in fact, the wall does not have to be masonry, that's, somebody just added that for fun, I guess. But it can be from any, it could be a wood wall, it could be a brick wall. A corbel is, does not have to attach to a masonry wall. So that was my other one, Richard, if you got that one, too.
Yeah, I actually was going to go through your.
Oh, okay, and I had another one, but I'll wait for you.
And I have to, I'm logged into the computer at the office, but it's frozen, so I'm finding a way around that, so just looking at the sent mail.
Maybe we need better broadband, just a joke.
Okay. On the, you had issues with the pagination and the lining things up, and that's, agree. Common open space, you said common use space, I kind of thought common area was a more commonly used term.
I like it.
The corbel, you're right, I agree that the masonry should be deleted. There, you caught a typo, owner should be owned. And then Judy's questions. The revision to the definition of daycare center would be that the language would read, daycare center means an establishment receiving compensation for providing care, supervision, and protection of six or more children at any one time during any part of the 24-hour day. Such daycare centers shall have and maintain certification of applicable approvals and applicable licenses from the state of Oregon and local authorities. So we don't identify any specific department. The same sort of change would occur under daycare home. I think the language I was proposing is such daycare centers shall have and maintain certification of applicable approvals and applicable licenses from the state of Oregon, and then drop the reference to a department and local authorities. So that would be the same basic change for daycare home. And then for variance, suggestion was that that's a planning commission thing, we should say that. I don't have strong feelings about it, except that I thought you should leave yourself the ability to change those things in the future. So I would suggest variance means a decision by the planning commission, comma, or other designated review authority, comma, to lessen or otherwise modify the requirements of the zoning code. You could always, you know, establish a land use hearing officer for such applications. You have options, and all you got to do there would be to go to the procedures ordinance and amend the table to assign responsibility. So that's up to you, I, if that's what you want. If you don't like that, then we could just say, by the planning commission. Write the word review authority. So those, I believe, are the only changes to, that's ordinance 17, I believe.
Yep. Judy had a question.
Yeah, Richard, Mr. Appicello, I believe that the variance is a type three. And for type three, you have to hold public hearings. But I would think it would just suit better to put planning commission.
If that's your preference, that's fine.
If I could add, maybe, could it be planning commission or what you used to call it before, designate, or if they decide with you to?
Yeah, what I said was, or other review authority. If you establish a land use hearing officer, obviously, that would require a hearing. So you always have that ability. If you say or designate, would also be work. But when you think about what other review authority really means here is designate. You know, you're, you can always change the table and designate somebody else to conduct a public hearing. Sometimes when the planning commission or another appellate body has a difficult hearing, like the Board of Codes and Appeals, I think it's our building board of appeals, we call it here. That ordinance actually specifically says you can appoint a hearings officer to address a complicated case. So, you know, I, I'm not strong about it either way, but whatever.
So, Richard, I.
I kept me off my computer, so I had to go on my phone.
I think Judy's concern would be a public hearing is available. And so not some kind of a review authority that can do it in the back room is, so I think that's where she's going, is.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I believe a land use hearing officer conducts a hearing which is open to the public and has the same land use procedural safeguards as a land use hearing before a planning commission.
But let me play devil's advocate. A variance, could council or somebody designate someone other than a planning commission or a land use person? That's, I think, when we have something that says or designated review authority is fine, as long as maybe there's an attachment that it, in a, in a public forum, or reviewed in a public forum or something, so that, you know, someone.
I don't think the type three procedure changes, I just think who conducts it could change. And there was just a little bit of, planning commission wanted to hold on to this particular application. That's fine by me. I just wanted to give you the flexibility, so that's the language I read. But if you just want to stick with change review authority of the planning commission, that's fine.
But I, you know, I guess I like flexibility. So, you know, I'm leaning that way, but I'm trying to close a potential loophole that a variance could be reviewed by a designated review authority in the back room and not in the open public.
Not if the procedures say it's a type three.
Oh, okay.
Well, that.
But that's not in the definition, though, right?
No, but again, that's in the procedures ordinance, not the definition.
Oh, okay.
Is there a way that it can be referenced? I mean, if a person is reading that and you go, well, they wouldn't know it's a type three. They wouldn't know variance is a type three unless you looked at the little chart in the other ordinance. Can you make reference to that part of the other ordinance?
I can. I mean, these were all intended to come together concurrently, but they're only going to be two weeks apart. So I, I don't think there'll be any, anyone really that understand that. But again, it's a little different for you, but using the generic term review authority, it's really common. And having a table that says, here are the different decision makers, and here's the land use applications and the processes to which they're assigned, as is proposed in the procedures ordinance, it's really, that's really a very common thing to do. So if you, if you're concerned, you don't usually go read the definition section first. You go look to see, you go to look for a table that tells you who makes a decision and what process.
Okay.
I think you're, once you see that in action, I think a lot of these concerns will go away.
All right, I can accept that.
All right. Thank you for raising it, though, Judy. So where are we with this?
I think I have to, did I do the reading? Right, I'll just do it again. This is the second reading of ordinance 2020-17, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, chapter 1708 definitions, amending and updated city definitions based on changes proposed in three other ordinances, 2010, 2020-10, 2020-13, and 2020-14. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the changes as noted. And that would be to change common open space to common area. And was there another, and the other ones I noted, that Counselor Hinden had mentioned, that a couple of changes that were noted.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve with changes as read.
Second reading and adopt the ordinance as read.
Yes.
All right, we have a, have a motion with a second from. All right, we have a have a motion with a second from Diane. Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Mark.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was and I just happened to notice unless this got mentioned on the
What was that?
Packet page four, six, six. Uh, there are some terms that are not in alphabetical order.
Um, I I will, uh, correct that.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Twig.
Okay, Hoagland.
Yes.
Coos.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. All right, and we have, uh, ordinance number 202018.
Um, Your Honor, counsel, before I do the second reading of this, I'll explain that I believe that, um, we were, uh, authorizing potential units. So in section six, I I changed the language to read deferral for potential units slash installment payments, LID and SDC. Referral for potential units parentheses over the one per lot minimum is expressly permitted if filed in strict compliance with the code deadline. The full amount deferred must be paid upon the occurrence of the trigger specified in the ordinance. installment payments for the LID final assessment and SDCs shall be permitted consistent with LCMC 1304160, Resolution 2019-22, Resolution 2019-26. And this final assessment ordinance, frequency of installment payments and interest rates of the final assessment shall be as provided in the final engineering report. Um, after talking to finance and public works, uh, they're not necessarily in favor of, uh, deferral for potential units. So, um, languid in either case, I think we should be clear. So if you're not interested in doing deferral for potential units, then section six should read no deferral for potential units slash installment payments, LID and SDC. No deferral for potential units is authorized. Installment payments for the LID final assessment and SDC shall be permitted consistent with, and then the language remains the same, um, as I read before. So, um, deferral of potential units basically means when staff calculated the, uh, number of assessments for the property, they used, uh, the fact that it was a zoned RM multifamily, uh, they calculated based on a a consistent formula that based the size of the properties and the zoning, they would be able to realize X number of units. It could be, I think they vary between like four and 20 something units. And the assessment is based on, uh, on that. Now, without a deferral, the, uh, property owner, the benefited property owner for the LID gets to, uh, make installment payments of their assessment, whatever their fair share assessment is. Um, deferral would allow them to pay for one, um, and defer the others until triggers that are set forth in the ordinance. And so the triggers in the ordinance would be, uh, they sell the property. Uh, there's a death and there's no surviving spouse that picks up the, um, deferral. Uh, there's a contract for sale, a development is approved. All those things are triggers which would, um, require the full amount of the assessment to be paid at a later time. Staff is not, um, enthusiastic about that because it just means we have a longer period of time to get our money. So, um, perhaps it's my, uh, mistake. I was under the impression we were authorizing, um, deferral of potential units. Uh, staff was a little surprised by the fact I had, uh, written the language I wrote. So I've given you alternative language to be clear whether or not you do not want to defer.
Okay. Um, it's Stephanie or Debbie, have have we not done the fur- uh, any deferrals on LIDs?
Um, so we've only done one deferral. And that was on the 36th Drive LID where we had a large chunk of property who basically was, um, a large percent of the overall cost of the LID. His assessment, the property's assessment was, um, uh, 300 something, uh, thousand. And he didn't want to even start making the payments on that because that was, you know, thousands of a couple thousand dollar payments. So we deferred him. That was a very, uh, that was the only time we deferred. And that was a specific case where, you know, he just said he he could not make those payments. And again, it was a large amount of the LID on levied onto one property. This one on Bard is distributed equally because of, uh, the the formula. And so, uh, we treated it as a, I guess, classic or a typical LID with no deferrals where everyone starts paying their assessed amount. Um, we didn't get any, uh, 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 people were ha- okay with that. Um, uh, except one person who came at the last council meeting and said he couldn't even afford those payments. And so that's when the whole deferral thing came up. And yeah, but as far as deferring on this LID, I don't see the case for it unless the person who who came to you, uh, spoke at the last, uh, hearing, the public hearing, then we may be able to do some kind of hardship situation, but we we haven't created that. There's people in the LID who still who who have come, who still struggle making their payment. So it was a very rare situation and it 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 isn't something that finance is crazy about because we end up with, um, you know, not getting paid back, uh, but into the fund, uh, essentially a revolving fund. So.
Yeah. And and it, just to clarify, the reason we, you know, I I'm not in favor of it is it it's not so much that we don't get paid back. It's that it um, that's the fund that we use for future LIDs. And if we don't get paid back, then we can't do LIDs in the future. And that's the reason. Um, and and when you defer something for who knows how many years, 20 years from now, you know, who's who, if it happens, who, what is the mechanism in place to make sure that that payment actually happens? I mean, you know, it's it's tough to remember stuff that was agreed to 20 years ago.
Okay, Debbie, the one that we did defer, did we actually receive the payment?
We did receive the we did receive payment on that, but that was only because the property was sold. Had it not been sold, um, we may never have gotten paid for it.
So, Your Honor, counsel, the, uh, I'll do the second reading, uh, ordinance 2020-18, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, providing for the levy of final assessments for the construction of a sewer improvement project known as the Southwest Bard Road Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District. Said LID formed by Resolution 2019-26, fixing spreading said final assessment amounts against benefit properties within the district. And ask for approval of second reading of the ordinance. And with, uh, the change to either allow potential unit deferment or not allow potential unit deferment, I've read both sets of language. It's up to you.
Okay, so entertain a motion.
I'll, okay, go ahead, Rick. Okay, I'll I'll, uh, move that, uh, we approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2020-18, uh, removing the, uh, language allowing for deferral of payments.
Is there a second? Hearing none. It dies for a lack of a second.
I'd like to make that motion with the allowing of deferring of the payments.
Okay, is there a second? And and that dies with the lack of a second. So, so, you know, uh, counsel, um, it's one or the other. And we've got to make this in order to start getting any money back. So so what's the discussion? What's Judy, uh, what's your question?
My question is if we allow to, if we vote to not allow the deferral, and as Stephanie mentioned, there might be some way to work independently with hardship cases or something. Is that something that would be worked out, but doesn't have to be put in this ordinance specifically?
Correct.
Is that correct?
No.
I'm I'm not aware of of how to do that. Um, there's a assessment for a number of units on page 506 of the packet. It it tells you that this person has 24 units and uh, this person has four and this person has 22 and this one has 11. And when the ordinance is passed, that's a lien on the property. Um, they, uh, can sign up for installment payment. Uh, if they don't sign up, uh, for installment payment, it's due payable. If they, uh, there is no option to defer unless the ordinance specifies that there's an option to defer. The guy with 24 units has to pay, start paying the assessment on 24. Three has to start paying for three. Uh, I don't know if any, if the ordinance says it has to specify.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Debbie.
I'm Stephanie, can you please correct me if I'm wrong? But my understanding in in this is that the assessments, the number of hookups are kind of used as a way of, um, comparatively sharing, sharing the costs so that no larger larger land pays more, pays the fair share. It's not that we're expecting that those properties are going to have 22 hookups or have four hookups. And if you defer it and say, okay, you only have to pay for the hookups that you have, you're you you will never get this money back into this fund. It, do my understanding that right, Stephanie?
Well, I would just only clarify, I would I would change that to no matter if you defer or not, the amount due on the property doesn't change. So whether they develop, their assess for, uh, the most is 30, by the way, and they only come in with, you know, 10, they still pay that full share once they develop, if you defer to development.
Mr. Mark.
So if if someone gets assessed this fee and it's it's a lien on their property and they just say, I'm just never going to pay this anyway. And, you know, when I die, I mean, the the city will get its share. And what happens then? I mean, do we take, do we take action? Do we sue for payment? Or do we just let it ride on the, on the lien?
If a deferral is allowed, there's, I don't think there's anything we can do.
I'm saying if the furl is not allowed, and someone just says, yeah, I'm I'm just not writing a check. What what happens then?
Well, we can proceed against them and foreclose on the lien.
We have, um, we currently have other another LID where we have some clients who have not made payments and we have, um, basically gone through the lien process where where we put a lien on the property and we accumulate the billing and the interest, um, month up to month. But we haven't done any even talked about doing any foreclosure or type of activity.
But but the point is that there's no money in the fund if if it's not paid back.
Right.
Yeah, it's it's going to affect your ability to do projects.
Other ones. And, you know, in in a way, I it's still a lien against the property. So, you know, that doesn't go away. It's it's there. I think Judy's point is a good one. You can lien it all you want. You know, if it only develops with one unit, um, you know, I
Well, Stephanie's point was that, uh, the dollar amount is the dollar amount. Um, if you are, if you defer 30 units and say you're you're, you know, furring 30 and and you only build three, you you still have to pay the 30. That's, you know, that was your fair share. Like, if you didn't utilize it, um, in the in the case that we had previously, that that property sold, um, you know, they they elected to take the maximum because they weren't sure. They thought they were going to build as many as they could possibly do. We gave them the option to do a development agreement. They didn't want to do it.
Okay. All right. Yep, Judy.
So one other question I have is is how does that work if the property is already developed? Because then there would be no trigger to ever require the payment.
Yeah, it's it would be sale or, uh, death.
Or or development, but it it's obviously not. Well, unless there's, the one with three units could be there and three septics. Um, but that trigger would be when you have to do something with the septics. We've got that in the the, uh, agreement. And the other would be, you know, on the 24 or 20, it's when you pull permits to start building, you know, anything other than what you got. So I would ask, go ahead.
I I was a little confused by something that someone just said, uh, so if if I've got a lot that could potentially have six units and I only want to build four and I never want to build six, i- is there a an agreement that can be reached with the city that I would only have to do the four?
Yes, um, that's actually what we had offered in the prior LID. We offered to do a development agreement to fix the number at a lower amount. Our ordinance requires us to do a potential unit assessment, um, at what would be the maximum. And if you want less, you can come forward with a development agreement and we can agree to do assess you less. But that development agreement binds the property to that lower number. Um, in in this case, we didn't have anybody doing that.
So these these things were offered as we were going through the the whole process of, um, explaining and the requests for the sewer in there. Remember, again, an applicant, they came to us, came to the city to install sewer. We we didn't go to them. So this has been a, um, area, uh, request. And when that happens, not everybody agrees, of course. Um, but it's been very open and, uh, process driven by the landowners. And usually that has to do because septics aren't working. And there's a need. So can we make a motion?
I still like the no deferral idea. Is anybody else interested?
A second.
I'm going to move that, um, oh, I lost the language there, but the move that we approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2020-18 without the language allowing for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
From Judy? All right, we have a motion to approve without a deferral with a second from Judy Casper. All right, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mark.
Aye.
Casper.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Kuz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, we've got, thou, special order of business. We have villages at Cascadehead renaming.
I guess that's me, huh, Ron? We, I'm, I'm only laughing because we've passed the buck on this to three people and I guess I'm the third in short straw, so you get me tonight. As, as we know, we've been discussing the changing of the name for the villages at Cascadehead to something else. I'm sure you've all read your packet, so you have more background information. With that, the survey that was sent out, we're asking people to follow the following criteria, which are engender a strong positive image, have historical, cultural, or social significance for future generations, is descriptive of landscape, significance of location, have symbolic value that transcends its ordinary meaning or use and enhances the character and identity of the area, and that it could conjure up an image. And we're hoping to capture that in just a very short few words. We checked with the tribe, the Confederated Tribe of Celets, and they provided us some information which you have in your packet. And as we have, do we still have Mr. Townsend will remember this, but of course, the, the top suggestion from, from Robert Kenta with the tribe council is salmon, that of course, I remember years back that Mr. Townsend, when he was a full-fledged employee of the city, that he checked with the Oregon, I'm going to say this wrong, but the geographic names for Oregon, and salmon is overused, so they said, we don't ever use it. And so we set that aside. The, the subcommittee went through the list that we had received and wanted to put forward two names to the council for the renaming. And it's getting dark in my room. Let me see if I can. Okay, the two names that came to the surface for your discussion and decision. The first one is the villages at Elk Ridge. And that's because there is the elk that roam through the villages. And the other name is the villages at Sitka Woods. And that's because the trees there are Sitka spruce and have some significance for that reason. So we didn't have a one and a two. We just had equal votes for both of them, so it's up to you.
You can, I, I see, looking at the list from the, in the packet, and I, villages at Sitka Woods was way down the list as far as account.
Yes. And the reason that it came up to the top and because of the other names, there were not quite, either they weren't as lyrical or that they've been used elsewhere for other things. Like the other one that came up was Wacoma Woods, but because of the Wacoma district that we have, there's some concern. And the other part of that is that Wacoma means ocean or sea. And you can't, unless you're very lucky and climb a tree, you won't be able to see it really from the villages. So we kind of thought that that wasn't quite, quite, it didn't, it wasn't a good example of describing the, the area, so.
I guess the, the other question I had was, you know, I liked the, you used Elk Ridge. You didn't want to go with Mulak Ridge?
I love that. That's okay with me.
Well, but that.
But that, but it didn't, but it didn't come up. But at our subcommittee meeting, there was some feeling that people would not understand what that meant and would take more explanation. And the other, the other part that was driving our decision was that we do want to help, we want the name to help in marketing the property so we could hopefully at some point see some houses up there. And that was another reason, you know, elk, elk, you can picture it, elk. If you say Mulak, you're not sure what that is unless you speak the Chinook jargon, so.
So, and I guess the other observation, I was a little shocked, I guess, at only, what was it, 55?
Yeah, that was a little, that was a little disappointing, quite frankly, but I want to blame it on the virus. I mean, I, actually, I thought this would be really a fun time, give some, something fun for people to do during this time. That was an initial thought. But, but, you know, I don't know if people aren't interested. Some people don't even know where the villages are, which is always astounding to me. But, yeah, maybe there just isn't any interest in, in helping think it through, so.
But was there any interest in just leaving it as it was? Maybe that, that was the interest of you.
No, we didn't get any comments to leave it. I'm looking at the list now and we didn't get any comments to leave it as is. Not for the villages at Cascadehead. We'll get to the Knoll in a minute, but. So the first part of it is, you know, of those two ideas that came from, came to you from the subcommittee. And then if you want to continue with talking about the Knoll, there was a wide, wide support for leaving it as it is, the Knoll. And as a matter of fact, Robert Kenta said that that's for the, on behalf of the tribe, that's what it's been known as, is the Knoll, so. And just a little more history, there is both the Celets tribe and the Tlumal tribe would use the area by the river, the Salmon River, that's on the other side of, of this area, so. But there wasn't any real firm, solid connection necessarily with the, with the actual area that's known as the villages to us. Except for the Knoll.
And Mr. Appicello, just going back, this was a, would be a DBA until things change. The, the name officially is still the villages on, on all the recorded documents? Is that?
Yes, yeah, that, well, I don't know if you want to go through the trouble of doing some kind of a DBA, but we could do that. For example, for the homeowners association. But I think that, yeah, we still have formal processes to go through to change the names on plaques and things like that. We talked about this not being the formal change. This is just what I like.
For, for marketing as, as a sentence.
And I think further on that conversation, I think the other, the rest of that was when we do our, the master plan and that that would be the time to change documents. And isn't that correct? And so we don't have double the cost of all the filing fees and everything. But then we have the guiding light and we have something for Mr. Chandler to get out there and sell some property.
Okay. Personally, I like Sitka Woods. Quite frankly, I don't envision or would like an elk running through my backyard or, well, condo parking spot. So I, I run into them enough on the golf courses, just.
I bet you do. They kick your ball in the hole, right?
Their hoof print is the hole.
Yeah, but one of the members of our subcommittee, Laurel Barton, who couldn't be here tonight, she, they have elk, you know, in that, in the developed area that is now currently. And they love them. They just come and hang out and the people just love them that live there, so. But I hear you. Sitka Woods, you like that one?
Other comments from council? Yes, Diane?
Because I go there every single day, I love the fact that it's Elk Ridge. But I like Sitka Woods too, just simply because, will the elk stay if we start developing or will they go away? That's my only concern is because in that, what we, what we call a disaster village, honestly. So in that little loop area, that's where they always are. But my fear is if you do develop it, they're going to have to find a new track somewhere else. But I, I have, I love the elk. I do love the elk.
Well, you realize they won't stay by naming it the elk.
I know, I know. So Sitka Woods though, because that does, it, it gives you that enchanted feeling of I'm in the woods. So I'll have to go with that one.
Mr. Mark?
I like Sitka, I like Sitka Woods. I like Sitka spruces. I think that, that fits. At, at the risk of rocking a boat, I just sent on chat to everyone a link to a grammar guide that talks about whether or not the word "the" gets capitalized using geographical terms. And they point out the example of the Grand Canyon. We all, you know, if you refer to the Grand Canyon, "the" is not capitalized. And if, in my mind, I would not capitalize the "the" in the Knoll. That's, I run into a bit of a wall there, but that's similar, you know, river. We don't say the Columbia River. We don't capitalize "the." Bridges, you don't, you know, the George Washington Bridge, "the" is not capitalized. That's kind of common usage.
Interesting. Thank you for that little education there. All right, so Ms. Casper?
Oh, I like Elk Ridge because it's one syllable. It's easy to say. However, I have to agree with Diane. They're not going to stay and I think Sitka Woods would be a fine name.
Okay, I guess we heard from everyone but me. And I just can pass on that both Councilor Parsons and Laurel Barton, the other, I think Ron abstained from voting. He was being very, very cool and, you know, kind of, kind of quiet. But anyway, I would agree Sitka Woods. And, and what I was going to say is both Laurel and Councilor Parsons said that they were fine with either. So.
Mr. Hoagland, we haven't heard from him.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see his face still there. He disappeared out of my mind.
Are you there, Mr. Hoagland?
I know, sorry, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, just not in the best service area. No, I like them both. You know, Sitka Woods is very nice. You know, I still kind of confused with this whole process of having it be, we're making this determination now, but then it's not formal. So then, you know, is it, I don't know, it's kind of confusing to me. And at 55, the sample size of 55, it seems kind of small for something that's so big. And especially when we're not going to be making this official, it seems kind of. I know there's been some people that really want to change it because it's not Cascadehead and, you know, all this and this and that, and I understand that, so. You know, I don't know, I'm kind of torn here.
So do you have a, do you have a, of those two names, do you have one that you like better than the other or lean more towards?
Sitka Woods over Elk Ridge. Elk Ridge seems like it's just one little place versus 350 acres of something. But I wouldn't vote for this, you know. Are we voting for this right now? I don't understand.
Yes.
This whole process. If this isn't going to be formal, then why are we doing this?
It's, it's formal, but what, it's just, the timing of it's delayed because Mr. Appicello told us that until we do the master plan, which.
It could cost thousands of dollars to change everything, right?
Right, they do it all at once rather than, rather than doing one and then the others. So we're just getting gearing up because I'm, you know, I'm really hoping that we start working on that master plan. We've got only, what, two years or even less now? 18 months or whatever it is before the other one sunsets. So I would like to see us get going. So this is just a little push on the, you know, just let's get us going here. We need to, you know, for the good.
Sitka Woods, if there's anything.
Okay.
Okay. I keep thinking, you know, it's so beautiful up there and the, and there are very few places to live at the moment in that beautiful area. And that means that they aren't paying taxes on that beautiful land. I mean, you know, as far as considering our, our job as fiscally responsible individuals for the city, I think we just need to move forward with this and this is just the boost to get us going.
So if name is the only thing holding people back, you know, being in the real estate market, it's more about price, location, and what's available.
Oh, hey Riley, guess what? We've got lots of deals for you. Just come on over.
Okay, so controlling the meeting. Mr. Mark, did you?
Well, I just had one little thought along the line of why change it now? Which is, you know, that turn, the villages at Cascadehead has been out there longer than I can remember. Maybe longer than I've been in Lincoln City, anyway. And, and nothing's happened there, you know, it's just been this.
Exactly.
Idea. And, you know, there is maybe some psychological nudge to, if you change the name, it's like, oh, something's about to happen and we start an urban renewal district. And, you know, it, it's, it's a signal that, that changes afoot, so maybe it's.
I would agree with you. I think it's at least something. And, you know, there is more pending, as we all know, right behind this. And to your point, too, the urban renewal district, so. So I, I guess the, the question on the table is one. You know, are you ready to, to change the name? And then if so, you know, Sitka Woods, Village of Sitka Woods? All right? So two-part, two-part question?
Yes and yes, for me.
Is there anybody that disagrees with changing the name now?
I also like the salmon, what the tribes suggested, Salmon River Hills or something, Salmon River some, you know, so.
Riley, the, there was an explanation on that, that the salmon is overused and didn't want to use that. We've been requested not to use that. So, so is there anybody who disagrees with changing the name now? Okay?
I disagree.
All right, so one out of the six of us. And so moving on, is Sitka Woods an acceptable name change? Is anybody that disagrees with that? I guess. All right, Mr. Attorney, is that okay as a?
Do you want a motion? I move to change the name of the villages at Cascadehead to the villages at Sitka Woods.
I'll second that.
There a second from Mr. Mark? Thank you. All in, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A quick question, if I may, folks?
One, one nay.
Oh, sorry. Who, who did the nay? Riley?
Riley.
Okay, thank you. And, and a question. Will, will that be a lowercase "the" or capitalized "the"? It's half a joke, but half true. I don't know, I don't know how to write it.
I think it's, I think it's 50/50. I appreciate what, what Mr. Mark said, but you know, there is the, the dowels and that is a "the." And what is in the paperwork now, Mr. Appicello or Chandler? It, it says it's a capital T, The Villages at Cascade Head.
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. So-
I'm pretty sure it's-
We could go the same as-
Keep it capital for now.
Yeah. Alright, moving on to something exciting. You know, we don't have to stay here all night. You know, we have a performance review process. Abby, oh, there she is. Alright.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Council and, and staff. I appreciate being able to talk about this tonight. I have two names on the screen. I was having trouble with my home internet. So, I'm on my phone, but I can see you all on a laptop.
Okay.
It's just, I can't see ya if I'm only on my phone. So, included in the packet tonight, you have a memo from me about performance evaluations for the three staff who worked for the council. So, that would be the city attorney, city manager, and the judge. The evaluations tend to be every year, year and a half, depending on the contract language for each employee. And we just needed to get a process going. The council needs to adopt a process for each employee that they would like to utilize. So, this is getting that conversation going. And I included the version you have used previously with the city attorney, the city manager, and the judge in the packet. So, city attorneys is exhibit A, managers exhibit B, and the judges exhibit C. I don't know if the entire council would like to take time to weigh in on details on everything, but we're here to talk about it. Voice concerns, and hopefully choose a process for each employee if you are ready to do that. If you wanna choose a process for one or two of them and modify another, modify all three, it's definitely up to the council.
Alright. I, I think it's fair to say these are the existing forms used that we've used in the past with these three individuals. There's always been some discussion whether, you know, the right questions are being asked or additional questions need to be asked. And, and that's what this is intended to do, an opportunity. Judy has taken a lot of time in looking at other communities, cities, and their forms and processes. And, you know, like most things, you like some, you hate some, and trying to point out and, and adopt, you know, something that works better for everybody, including the employee. And I think, you know, Judy, wouldn't it be fair to say that, you know, the, the sense was, for you anyway, there were areas missing in the review process that you would like to somehow get integrated?
Yes. Would you like me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we, there was a document here called International City County Manager Association. And, and I got to thinking that as new council members come in, we've, we've never really had like a training, training tips or training do's and don'ts. And so, one thing I think is missing is that if we have like the HR director or someone like that, give us kind of an overview of what to look for in an evaluation and why we're doing it, what an evaluation allows you to do. And then, I think that would be the number one thing we need to do. I think one of the things in the C, ICMA is that they always suggest a self-evaluation. And that's just kind of a way for, for the, the person to reflect upon what they're doing. And, you know, hopefully generate more internal communication, a little freer atmosphere. And I, I like that idea, that concept. And I think communication is, is always important in all three of these employee interviews, because they, they reflect a relationship with the council. And so, maybe some focus on communication to the council or with the council. And so, this will generate some concerns and priorities that, that the council has. So, let's see, what else? I think that covers it. The, the format is, is okay, you know, the one we have. Well, even like say for the city manager, if we could just add some components to them around the communication area, and probably for the attorney as well. I think that would be helpful for us.
Is there, do you have a, a draft or anything? Or is that a next stage where you could-
Yeah.
...drafts of, those components that you'd either add or take out?
I, I do. I, I've taken some from various cities.
What would you weigh that?
Yeah. And the booklet is-
You'd never weigh?
I'd be happy to share with you.
Okay.
In fact, one, one of, one of the cities had a, had a really kind of a nice idea. It was a discussion topics that kind of opened it up to the whole group, rather than just looking at a sheet of paper and each one of us going through and, and giving comments. This is more like an open discussion on topics in general. I, I thought that would be very helpful for something like the city manager, who has so many hats and, and different roles. And give us more of an opportunity to talk about what, what he sees, his obstacles are, or were, or how we can help. And, and kind of do a check-in every now and then. I know we've been doing it every year, but sometimes there's so many things happening, it, it would be nice just to check in maybe twice a year instead, to see how things are going and, and what's going on, because it's helpful for the council to be informed.
Yeah. So, I, I'd like to hear from the other counselors. Are they, you know, this is something Judy's been interested in and, and working on, but are there feedback from the other counselors as to things, you know, not working for you or the process or, because I, we've ebbed and flowed a bit and, you know, we've used different forms over the years. You know, quite frankly, you know, I think Ron, you know, if I put words in his mouth, but he's, he likes the more frequent interchange with counselors and immediate feedback. And as you can tell, even from the form, that's a revised, you know, short one. So, there's, there's different styles, but you know, one you need, you as counselors need to be able to give good feedback to the employee. And the employee's gotta be, you know, such a fashion to receive it. So, this is, you know, looking for direction from you and your experiences, especially as three of you have been four years and two of you, or three of you have been two years. So, you've danced with performance reviews. Thoughts? Discussion? Not interested?
Well, I think, oh-
Go ahead. Go ahead, Riley.
Uh, you know, I think part of the things when I first came in, there was, we were immediately tasked with a performance eval. And I think part of, something that could make it better would be those departing, part of the, the departing counselors could have written that for the review. So, it wouldn't fall on the newly elected officials to have that. And it would be a more representation, you know, a better representation of the last year. So, if that could be something, if in the event it falls on election year and, you know, the, the counselor is exiting, part of that exit process could be a review for those three individuals.
Yeah. So, timing is, yeah. Deanna, you were raising your hand?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, as you remember, I struggled with this newest version. I mean, I, I understand it works well for Ron and it's for Ron, but for someone reviewing him, I just had a hard time with it. And part of it was because there's three options up there rather than five numbered categories, as we had used before. And so, there's not enough gradation, you know, for where I might think he lands. I like the numbering system, I'm just saying. But we were able to, in previous years, we were able to use the numbering to get an average of where we all were. And anyway, I like that. And I had a whole bunch of other comments, but I can't find them right now. So, I'll have to do a PS later.
So, anybody else? Rick?
Uh, I think Deanna makes a good point there. I like the five, you know, one, two, three, four, five, rather than just a middle box or, you know, I, I think that's, that's a little easier to deal with. To Riley's point, what, are we locked in on a certain time of the year to do the evaluations? I mean, if the evaluations were at the end of the year and not the beginning of the year, would that address his?
But, yeah, I guess, one, you, you'd need to talk about fiscal year or calendar year. And then you also have, you know, kind of their hire date comes into play, you know, and, and what the, the contracts say. But Abigail could share more information there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Nothing specific about month is denoted in any of the contracts. We generally try to do it every year. I did see, I think it was in the judge's contract that said not more than a year and a half. So, there is some wiggle room there if you did want to define timing with a fiscal year or a calendar year, and keeping in mind election status and incoming, outgoing council.
Okay. Yep. So, you know, what, what's your pleasure? Judy's interested in doing something.
One more thing to say, yeah. The, the management manuals also mention something about 360-degree assessments, where anonymously employees that you work with can provide input. And this could be done probably like through a monkey survey or something from employees to get feedback on their opinions too. It'll be done anonymously.
Yeah. I would support both of what you're saying, both that kind of international aspect and a way in which employees, because we, as counselors, don't know really what that perspective is. And, you know, we're not given the, any kind of input that way versus our direct observational input, which is very limited. And so, we're assessing something on a limited kind of basis that way.
So, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Appicello, do you guys wanna weigh in? Cause you're two of the three that would be evaluated. And, you know, you've heard the discussion so far.
So, sure. Mr. Mayor, just a few things. First of all, as far as timing, I really do like the fiscal year idea better. Everything we do ties to a fiscal year. And so, if you're looking at doing an evaluation in August or September, I think that's a great time rather than January. Cause January, you're right in the middle of your budget stuff. So, I like the fiscal year. I like a lot of what Council Casper was, was talking about. I like the discussion parts, the communication parts more frequently, perhaps not as a formal evaluation, but more frequently. I've often felt that one of the hardest things that I have to assess is, are you getting enough information? And, and that's a very individual thing for counselors. And so, that's always a difficult. As far as how the numbering system, I don't really have a preference on that. So, whatever you prefer on that. Now, as far as the speaking with employees, I would not support an anonymous speaking with employees. If you're going to speak to the employees, go speak to the employees. Assign it out to council members so that they have to look you in the face and say what they think. But I would not support an anonymous type of a survey.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Appicello, thoughts?
Just that, you know, I'm okay with proceeding the way we have in the past with the current form. We're kind of overdue for the February to February time period that we've been using for my evaluation. I agree that with Riley, that when you wait and new counselors come on board, they're disadvantaged and they don't even know what time period you're reviewing for. So, I think in the short term, I think we proceed as we have in the past, using the form we've used in the past. I'm not adverse to restructuring it. When I look at the International Municipal Lawyers standard contract, this is for in-house counsel, they have a paragraph at the end about performance evaluation and how that's to be developed and evaluated. I think one of the factors in there is that once you go through the process to, to develop it, you don't get evaluated for at least nine months, because you have a different set of criteria and you're being reviewed against. So, I'm all for working that out. I can get you a copy of that if you wanna see it. And I'm sure that the Municipal Lawyers Association has more forms than I can, I can get for you. But I think that in the short term, we should just do what we did in the past and, and get them done, because my evaluation period right now is from February to February. And so, we're running, you know, half a year later. I agree with Ron that I think anonymous, anonymous doesn't work for me. So-
Okay. So, you know, Judy, I, I guess it would be helpful if we saw what your, you know, suggestions. Maybe you and Abby could, could revise the, the form that you're, to add what you're suggesting and do a, a yellow line or something that where, where you're putting new stuff in. And just to share with us what you'd propose. Is that, that alright? Abby, are you alright?
Yeah. I'm, that'd be great. I would love to bring, you know, incorporate your suggestions into the current format and bring that forward for you to look at.
Okay. And maybe, you know, if you could take Mr. Appicello up on getting that, whatever the association attorney's form even looks like, might be-
International Municipal Lawyers Association.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And sooner the better, you know, so we don't have them on pins and needles.
Okay. Yeah. I think we can pull that together. Did, um, did anybody have anything about the judge's evaluation? Did it look okay the way it was?
I think it's fine.
Well, yeah, the, the real problem has always been, you know, there's not much criteria there. It's-
I think, you know, that the judge takes the direction of the council. I'm not so sure we've, we've given the judge the direction that we, we wanna, you know, see enhanced. Cause one of the things that we've, we've looked at now is a lot of education has been going on. And, and now we're talking about muni court and maybe more discussion about the culture of our court or different looks that the court could take. So, we don't know. We haven't really talked to him about that.
But that's not a performance review. That's, that's engaging of future, you know, plans. So, I hear ya. There's nothing wrong with that, but, you know, that's not an evaluation. And how, you know, I still struggle with, you know, how do we evaluate? And, and even he does. You know, we, we had him on the seat trying to say, tell us how we should be evaluating you.
Yeah.
So-
I just, I just have a question.
Sure.
So, wherever- So wherever I can find my notes, I have them buried somewhere, but, and if I had ideas, who do I send them to? Abby? Okay, thanks, Abby. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't, why don't we go to the West Devils Lake Road temporary closure? That must be Stephanie.
Well, I wasn't sure if Ron was going to lead this. He's given the authority to, as we come to a construction phase with our bridge, and as we have been telling people for a while, the bridge will, the West Devils Lake Road will need to be closed. We have, this will be a complete closure for 21 days. We have adhered to, of course, the ordinance that required the first posting. Staff sent out letters to the first responders. The feedback we got from them was, thanks for letting us know. It was very positive. There wasn't a lot, any panic or what's going on. So the, the way this is gonna, will work, if approved, is there's going to be flagging beginning August 17th, okay? And so through August 17th, through the 31st, there's going to be one lane closed, but they'll be flagging people through. Beginning August 31st through September 21st, it will be closed. So the detours will be only through the north. So you'll have to either use Holmes Road to get to Depp's Lake Road or Highway 101. The bridge has been weight limited for a fire for a while. So they were just, again, you know, got the heads up, fine, well, that's, they're okay with it. And so after this, after this closure goes into effect, the declaration of it, we will then send out letters we have prepared tomorrow to all the affected property owners. And so they, and it includes people on Holmes Road, so they understand the impact to their traffic is probably going to be significant for this period. Also, in the letter, we've asked people to use, use the Highway 101 and not use Holmes Road if it's not an emergency. We put the notice also on the city homepage, our website, and that's where we are tonight. And Ron's going to ask, as we'll declare this closure.
Mr. Mayor, just a little clarification. There's really no action that's needed for you tonight because you and the ordinance has have given me the authority to make this, this closure. The real purpose that we wanted to bring it forward tonight was so we get it out in the public one more way, just so everybody is aware of what is going to be taking place. Like Stephanie said, we've been trying to get the word out, and this is just another way for us to get the word out, first to you and then to everybody who may be watching this. There is a map that's included in the packet that will be included in all of the other areas that shows how to make the detours. And so we'll continue to try to get out the word, but you'll notice on packet page 531 that this declaration has my name on it. And so this is really just to simply answer any questions you may have, but really get the word out.
No, thank you. And it's good. It sounds like a lot of publicity is getting out, and that's, that's what we need, so I appreciate it. Any questions of council? Yeah, Mr. Mark?
Oh, just a thought, and there's probably no answer to this, but, you know, if you're used to going to 22nd to get out to, go over to 101 and use the traffic light there, I mean, if there's a lot of traffic being dumped on homes instead, then they're coming out where there is no traffic light, is that, how much of a problem is that going to be? Are people going to instinctively go all the way to the end of West Devils Lake Road to find the light there? I don't know what happens in that situation.
If, if it was me, on a regular, on a regular weekday, I would probably go down Holmes Road. If it's on the weekend, I would probably try to find the light if I need to make a left turn.
Yep. But of course, you're talking to a counselor that, you know, goes to Safeway four times a day in that August.
I just have a, I just have a comment. I should be then expecting some email complaints or, or praises for this project. It's in my name, it's in my area.
You, you will receive complaints during the process. You'll see, receive thanks afterwards. The one thing I would recommend that you do is to send them out, so people see the different options that are available to them. And so they, like I said, what I've generally found when roads are closed, people are upset if they don't know about it. If they know about it in advance, can plan for it, it takes a little bit of a sting out of it.
All right. Go, Anne.
Since I travel, I do that every day, so I have dealt with all of their, the signs holding and waiting. So I think people who travel that know that's happening, but is there a sign that maybe we could put up so as they're going through right now, they'll see that, that it's going to be closed?
I don't believe we are using our reader board sign, so we could do that.
Then prepare them ahead of time.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And also, we have a traffic control signage plan that will notify people on 101 and 14th. So there'll be additional signage that you don't see today.
Great. Okay, thank you. And we'll try to get the word out as well. So, could we go to COVID updates?
Yes. So Mayor and Council, you have some information in your pack, and I'm not going to go through that, but I did want to bring up a few things that are, kind of the questions that we receive and the, and the things that come up, and these much have been since the packet was published. First of all, there were questions that we received today regarding pickleball and playgrounds. Both of those are Phase Two items that get to take place during Phase Two but not during Phase One. So we'll be in contact with those. I also noticed this weekend, boy, there were a lot of people at Regatta Park, and man, it was, it was loaded. And so that continues to be an enforcement issue. I must however say that this whole weekend was very, very busy. There was a lot of people here this weekend. The second question that we have come up is quite regularly right now, is the state mandate of 10 and how it pertains to the lodging industry, particularly to vacation rental dwellings. So we sent a note up to the governor's office and asked that question. And we received a response today from Sarah Means with that office, and she wrote, do people, or the question is, do people and businesses who rent outside residences for short-term lodging, for example, Vacasa, Airbnb, and the others, have to ensure that the renters are not violating the indoor social get-together guidance? Answer, in order to help prevent or slow the spread of COVID-19, people and businesses who rent out short-term lodging should, to the best of their ability, only rent to individuals in the same household or in the same family who are congregating together. More than 10 individuals not in the same household who stay at a short-term rental together for social or recreational purposes are in violation of this guidance. So we have given that to Weston, to the police department, so that they can act on accordingly. Up until we received this, the most effective tool that we had had was the licensing and the limitation that we have on the, the number of people that can stay in a vacation rental dwelling based on the rooms that they have. And so I thought this would be an interesting note to you. We have 336 BRDs with an occupancy of 10 or less. And then we have 210 BRDs with an occupancy on their license of 11 or more, 11 to 16. So the most effective tool we have is, as always with these state mandates, they can be very difficult to enforce. So the most effective tool that we have is actually our licensing, and that would be the first area we would look to on that. Also, please note that the October 2020 League of Cities Conference has been canceled, and they will have a two-day virtual meeting instead. As we receive information, we'll send that to you. We did make application for the second amount in the CARES funding. As you recall, we had applied for and received $149,537 or received the, was awarded it. That leaves us with $258,537 that is eligible to us between now and the end of the year. As we looked at those, we, applications, we looked by fund, because the money that is coming back should go back to the same fund. And so we have, we put in an application for $109,000. Primarily, that will come to the general fund. And then that will leave us $149,537 to apply for by the end of the year. And then finally, some, the board of, or the county commissioners had a meeting today. Ken took some notes, and there were a couple of things to highlight, particularly as it relates to Phase Two. That's probably another one of the biggest questions that we have, is when are we going into Phase Two? Doctor, or Director Austin recommends that the county wait another two to three weeks before considering applying for Phase Two. We, we are close, but we currently don't meet all of the criteria for Phase Two. And then the commissioners, both were reluctant to applying for it at this time. So it looks like we're a little bit farther out. One thing of note that I, that I wanted to pass along is that all long-term care facilities will be tested monthly at the direction of the state now. And then, as we've heard on many times, the thing that gets the biggest news is the outbreaks, yet the warnings that we're getting from the state and the county levels is that it's the small gatherings, family gatherings and things like that that are, that are leading to a lot of the outbreaks we're seeing in the state. That's my update, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any questions of council? Is in? You're muted.
I know, I couldn't find the right button. Ron, I was just curious, you know, with the BRDs and those that are above 10, you know, if they're licensed for above 10 people, is Weston going to be sending the owners and the managers a letter reminding them?
Yeah, it'll be both that, and then more importantly than that is that we'll, we'll send the information to OSHA, which is who's been asked to help us with that to the state. And so we'll send it to them, but we'll also send it to the letter. And he started that this last week with one complaint. As a matter of fact, he contacted them, and so we'll continue to do that.
That's good, because as you all know, I have several in my neighborhood, and they're jam-packed full, overfull, some of them, so that's good. And I, I guess you already answered all my other questions. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mark?
So if we send a letter to these BRDs, is there, what do we do to follow up? Is there a way to audit, you know, drop in by surprise now and then and see if they're adhering? And what do we do then if they're not?
Still, the primary, the best means that we have is, is through calls, people calling in and complaining, because then it gets onto the record and everything else. I, I do believe that our, I do believe that our police department is doing just some spot checkings from here and there, but it's kind of on a as-they-can type of basis. But, but it's still the best way is for us to get calls. But yes, well, I'll bring that up. The other, the other way to do it that we've been starting to do a little bit more this year has been looking at what is being advertised. We have found several that are advertising higher than what they are permitted. And so, and the, and really the best tool that we have, and the first thing that we will look at, no matter what occupancy level that they have, is are they exceeding the occupancy level that's on their license? Because we have, it's much easier to enforce that than it is to try to enforce the COVID-19 requirements. So somebody has 16 and they're advertising to rent for 20, that gives us a much easier tool to use.
And a reminder to everyone is the call-in goes to the non-emergency number at the police department.
It does. 996, 994-3636. And then what happens from there is that if it's a police matter that needs to be dealt with immediately, they'll dispatch the police. If not, they will send an email to Weston, and he will then follow up on it.
Yes. Mr. Mark again?
It was a little concerning that what email we received from the woman who called the county hotline and was told that the city doesn't enforce them, you know? And, and really, you know, I started to try to, I was glad, Ron, that you replied to that woman. I had started to formulate a draft reply myself, and I thought, I'm not really quite sure what I can say to this person, so I was glad you did that. The, I mean, as far as the mask requirements, we really still put it on the businesses to enforce that. And if a business doesn't want to block a customer from entering the business, what recourse? So if another customer, you know, if someone wearing a mask is in that shop, and someone without a mask comes in and the shop owner doesn't do anything, again, call the non-emergency number or?
Call the non-emergency number, and if you go to our Facebook page, there is a link where you can actually send in a form to one of our state agencies to follow up on that. I don't, I have not heard a report back on what, on what the state is actually doing when they receive those, but, but that's the other option is to send it to the state.
And that would be OSHA?
OSHA, exactly.
Okay. Was that a combination of the manager's report as well, Ron?
Just, just two more really brief things. One is that look for your calendars. We're going to send out an invitation to you guys to, we just, last week, a few of us went through the reopening plan for the community center on what they will go through when the time comes to reopen. I was so impressed with what they did that I had suggested to Jeannie that we need to do that with you. So we'll, so Courtney will get in touch with you guys over the next couple of days to schedule a time on that. Also, there are still a lot of projects that we have that are unrelated to COVID, but get pushed around because of COVID. And I'll send you a report on that on Friday, just giving you an update as to where we are.
All right, great. All right, Mr. Appicello, do you have anything?
I was going to talk to you about the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, but the final order has not been signed. My guess is that the chair, who has delegated the authority to sign it, is going to bring it back to the August Planning Commission meeting. So I guess we don't need to talk about that today.
Okay. All right. How about any other public comments come in? Mr. Twig, anything? Mr. Twig, anything?
No, nobody is, nobody's here, just me and Chief Palmer.
All right, thank you. And Ron?
No.
Okay, good. How about counselors? Diane, you want to, any, any comment?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Deanna?
Well, I just, I have two. One is I just wondered, and they're both for Ron. So you're going to be putting on our schedule sometime to have a discussion about the Fourth of July? And is that, okay, okay. And my second thing is also for you. Remember when, way back, I don't know, a year or two years ago, you know, it all runs together? You had this great idea and I think it would be really, especially now during COVID, it might be worth looking at again. You were talking about parklets. I was just thinking, you know, well, we're, a lot of restaurants where there are, where there is room, that they can bring tables and chairs outside so, you know, people don't feel so close during COVID. Anyway, it just made me think of your parklet idea for some seating, outdoor seating for, I don't know, restaurants or coffee shops or, or whatever. Anyway, I just thought I would bring it up.
Okay. All right.
Yes. I'm hoping that we go into Phase Two pretty soon so the skate park can open. I now have Anchor Avenue International Skateboarding right past my house. It's pretty exciting. People are getting pretty good, but I'm worried that they're going to get hurt. So that'll be exciting to happen. I was wondering what, how we're coming with the parking permits for people who live, we mentioned something about college permit, like that type of thing, for people who live here and need on-street parking permits.
I've got two or three things to present to you. I need to go through them with Richard. My intent is to have those on our next agenda.
Okay, cool. And then the League of Oregon Cities had asked us to prioritize some topics for the coming up legislature session. And Ron diligently heard it us together and we responded here. So I'd kind of like to read the top seven issues that came before all of us that should bear some weight. Want to hear them? Sure you do.
Yep.
Broadband and infrastructure and technical assistance funding, housing and service investment, COVID-19 economic recovery investments, infrastructure financing and resilience, property tax reform, mental health service delivery, low-income energy efficiency and affordability programs. And then we had seven more that were also supported, but those were our top ones, top seven. The other ones that we'll send off, we're going to send this list to the LOC by August 7th with Ron's help. Digital and equity inclusion, green energy slash renewables, local climate action planning resources, local energy project support, long-term transportation infrastructure funding, water utility rate and fund assistance, who's my favorite, reducing wastewater impacts from wipes and other non-fleshables. That's nice on the legislative agenda. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mark?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. And Riley, are you still there?
I'm still here and no, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. The only thing I have is a reminder to the public that there's an election this year and there are three city council positions up for election. And you can pick up your packets through Mr. Twig, I understand, at City Hall. And, you know, I know those who have picked up, you know, love to have challengers. So it's always nice to have an election against somebody rather than just yourself. So I would certainly encourage the public to get involved, share the joy. And those who have written love letters and kindly suggestions to us all, here's an opportunity to, you know, run for office.
Mayor, if I may, if I'm, because I only work part-time, if I'm not in, Tony will also, Tony Lassoia, my boss, will also give out the packets as well.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, good as the order, we'll call it a night and you guys talk way too much. See you next meeting.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.